February 13, 2024 City Commission Work Session. We will now call the meeting to order and Mr. Lee, may we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Marl?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Here.
Mayor McGriff?
I am present. And for those in the audience, just want you to know, we are not always serious because not everything has to be totally serious. So if you don't have some levity, then you know, it's a very sad day. All right, so on our work session agenda, we have, as usual, at the top of the pops, we have future work session items and we have a list of future work session agenda items which will be introduced and discussed by the person to my right.
Thank you. Good evening. So coming up in March, we'll have the McLaughlin Boulevard enhancements project update and then an update concerning the Clackaman Park master plan alternative RV park location. Also looking at the piece on the west side of 909E that's owned by the Urban Renewal District, right adjacent to the Cove. In April, we're looking to bring back the Parks and Recreation Master Plan update. So those were what we have on the agenda coming up for March and April at this point.
May I add something not to the list, but the Youth Advisory Commission is interested in getting a little briefing about the Park's master plan.
I believe they're going to be, they're scheduled to go to Youth Advisory, Citizen Involvement Committee, as well as Parks and Rec Advisory Committee before it gets to the City Commission.
Good. They just kind of wanted to know about it and I said, yes, we could make that happen.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I do have one thing I'd like to add. A few months back, we heard about the SDC fees on the Bridgeview building?
Yes.
And discussed the possibility of perhaps a grant program to offset SDCs in targeted situations and I'd like to see that get on our work session agenda.
Yeah, I was actually going to suggest the same thing under my items because, as you know, I'm working with the applicant for that, on that state grant to keep the project moving along.
And one more small thing. With Commissioner Marl's approval, you had added inclusionary zoning. I would just like to see us expand that topic a little bit. There's other things that we could do to encourage affordable or more affordable anyway, housing. So I'd like to see that be a bigger discussion than just the idea of inclusionary zoning.
We are having, through the offices of Ms. Heard Ravage, we are having that discussion at the Development Stakeholders Group and it's probably not going to be on every agenda, but I think we had, we got off to a really good start with a couple of things and there's other folks on there that probably we need to hear from, but we're kind of exploring the idea from the development side and talking with them about what are some of the constraints that they have. And obviously, one of the things that was stated, and this is something we all know, is that one of the things that, the only thing we control is SDCs. And I said, and agreeing with Ms. Nelson, that yes, but making those reductions, it's kind of like that squeezy toy, so you squeeze it over here and then the costs have to come out of someplace else and be borne by someone else. So it's not really, I would think, the panacea that has been touted at the state level. So that is a conversation that we should definitely continue and keep moving that forward because I think there may be some things we can do that we don't think we have the ability to do, but we have to kind of think bigger. So I would totally agree.
A consensus for both of those from the Commission?
So which affordable housing or housing incentives would you be curious about?
Well, one that I would be curious about is, and again, it's, you know, we need X amount of money in the SDC pot, but I think we should at least consider the idea of lower SDC fees for certain types of housing like an ADU?
Yeah.
Or middle, you know, land division?
Yeah.
Situations, turning a single family into a duplex.
Yeah, but my opinion is it has to be tied to something. It can't be carte blanche because...
Well, I think it's a discussion we need to have.
Yeah, that's a discussion we need to have. I have some examples of other jurisdictions that are, have tried this and anyway, so we'll move on.
I would support that and I think that another thing that we've heard about with the SDCs conversation is the idea of tiered SDCs and so I think that's another option we could explore as well. So I would support that. And the other one, what was that again?
I didn't, I didn't have another one.
No, there were two.
Yeah, just the two.
The targeted grant program.
Oh, the grant, yeah, yeah. Or some way to reduce the burden for...
Yeah, I would support that because I really want to see that project move forward. I would prefer and I wish that we have the ability to use urban renewal for that, but barring any movement on that, I'd support us having a look at that as a City Commission.
Maybe there's a way we can move the court faster. All right, so tonight we have two discussion items and we have an update from the Downtown Oregon City Association. Anything you want to say about that before we call them up? Mr. Ram?
Sure. Good evening Commissioners. I'd like to welcome Juliana Allen, who's the new DOKA Executive Director. For a first update in terms of the activities of DOKA, I know she's been very busy realigning the mission and activities of the organization, so she's been quite busy. The, DOKA is, by contract or memorandum of understanding, DOKA is scheduled to make a presentation to you twice, two times in a year. The first one would be in December and we're a little late on this because she's new and she was trying to be involved in reorganizing and working with her staff to realign DOKA. And also July 31st is the next time you'll see her with an update regarding DOKA. As a side note, DOKA, the Chamber of Commerce and OCBA, we have been meeting since October, since actually October. Maybe OCBA has just joined us, but we've all been meeting together at the same time, coordinating our responses to what we call the big picture issues that the city is facing with regard to the business community, economic development and growth. These big picture issues include how to help the business community mitigate the issues surrounding the houseless or homeless situation. Another big picture issue is the toll, rallying the business community around that issue. And also, we have an increasing number of building vacancies around town and we need to sort of focus our energies on that as a coordinating committee. And last but not least, and certainly not least, but, and certainly not last, because there are other things that we want to pay attention to, but natural disasters, as we need to develop a plan together as to how to respond to them and help the business community mitigate natural disasters when they come and you know they will come. So I am very pleased to have her and we've been working closely together and I look forward to working closely together with my other colleagues on the, with the other organizations because this is important for us to do this and focus on the big picture issues for this community. So without further ado, I'll give you Juliana.
Hi. Can everyone hear me? I mean, we're all close.
Yeah, just, you might have to just pull that down a little bit.
Okay.
There you go.
Better?
Yeah, I mean, I hear you fine, but it's the recording that we're concerned about.
Perfect. Anyways, hello. Thank you all for having me. I'm looking forward to giving this update. This is my first one, so I am definitely open to hearing questions and feedback after I get through the presentation. Okay, so let's get started. Is that the right button? There we go. Okay, so on our agenda tonight is, I'm going to be giving an activity report, an update on what we did in quarter three and quarter four, so July through December. I will go through what our organization has accomplished. I also want to talk about our plans for 2024, then the main issues that I am hearing from our business community, and then lastly, the successes of our organization since beginning this role in September. Okay. All right, so an update on what we accomplished during quarter three and quarter four. First city celebration attracted thousands of local and tourist traffic to the downtown district. And then our fall season kicked off with the Harvest Festival on Main Street and that attracted a variety of vendors and that was a largely local attendance is what we saw primarily present at that event. Trick or treat Main Street is a staple in our community. That one had thousands, thousands of so many children and adults alike. That one is very well received in our community. It's a staple. And then in November, we did a Spirits Walk, which was a little bit different. This year, we really focused more on trying to engage our business community... This year, we really focused more on trying to engage our business community and our, um, distilleries, excuse me. And we had a lot of retailers reporting that they did have an increase in sales that evening, and then it trickled over into the next couple of weeks as well. So that was a, that was a win for us. And Small Business Saturday was reimagined as a strategically focused media content initiative with multiple retailers reporting increased sales, and some of them even reported record sales on Small Business Saturday. And then last, last event of the year was our Holiday Tree Lighting, and that attracted thousands, excuse me, hundreds, not thousands. It was, you know, 30 degrees out and raining. It was, it attracted hundreds of local attendees, and our emphasis on the tree lighting this year was to elevate the experience. So we did that via a live band and more interactive, family-focused events, or events, or activities, excuse me. Okay, so plans for 2024. So Downtown Association is excited about a fresh calendar of events for the year 2024. The goal of each event is to contribute to our mission of creating community and cultivating commerce in the downtown district. In addition to our hospitality-focused events, we'll also continue to emphasize outreach, relationship building, and refining our strategic plan. So in the following slide, I do have the event calendar, so I'm not going to talk too much about it right now. I will, I will present the event calendar on the next slide. But the biggest focus of our event calendar is aligning every event we do with our mission of community and commerce and increasing the hospitality emphasis of our district. So not only do we want to be more hospitable to our business community, but our, just community in general, and our sponsors as well. A huge initiative of ours has been, has been since I started and will continue to be is outreach and relationship building. That is something that has been a primary focus of mine since I started, and that will continue to be a primary focus. So we're working on reestablishing a supportive relationship with our business community. And like I said, this will continue to be a main focus of mine in 2024. Strategic Plan. So in accordance with our organization's new leadership and stated mission, we have successfully been awarded a grant to refine our strategic plan. This effort will serve to align our mission and vision with the district's near and long-term goals. So here is our calendar of events. So as you can see, we greatly pared down the number of events that we are doing. And the emphasis is more on creating a hospitable environment for everybody. So kicking off, excuse me, in May with a Wine and Art Walk. So that one is historically just like a wine walk, except what we're going to do is we're going to add in an arts component via placing an artist or a small maker in each one of our retail, retail establishments that are already hosting a winery. We did just get a new winery in the downtown district, a women-owned winery, and they are going to be partnering with us to be filling as many of the winery spots as possible, because they're already in our downtown. First City Celebration, there's a date on that one. We're excited to, excited to do that one again this year. That one is a staple in our community and very well received. Sunset Town is a new one for us. So we're doing on every Wednesday evening in July and August. We're going to, going to be doing a concert in the plaza in hopes of attracting business to our retailers and our restaurants on a day that they typically don't get as much foot traffic. So the goal of that one is to send people to our businesses, send people to our restaurants. Zip Shop and Sway, another twist on our wine walk. So that'll be wine, arts, and then we'll end with a concert in the plaza on that evening. Trick or Treat Main Streets, Small Business Saturday, going to be even more heavy on the media-focused. Both our administrative assistant and I are very well-versed in media, social media and media in general. So he and I have a lot of good plans for that day in particular to really emphasize our district. And then Holiday Tree Lighting, we have a date on that one as well. Okay, so like James mentioned, we have a couple of conversations that I think I have multiple times every day. The courthouse, big conversation brought up. I, I purposely park far away from where, where the office is so I can walk on Main Street and talk to whoever's out there. Courthouse and the houselessness population are the two things that are coming up over and over and over. So the courthouse is a major area of concern and a constant topic of discussion. Members of our district fear the loss of weekday activity at the courthouse will result in very real, I don't know what that says right there. Because it is something, let me just, I printed it as well. Okay, among these concerns are loss of retail sales, diminished restaurant activity, and a decline in community foot traffic resulting in a less hospitable environment. The more people we have walking around downtown, the safer it feels, the more vibrant the community feels. And with the courthouse going away, that is a major concern of our, of our business district. The other big concern I'm hearing over and over is the business community is very concerned about the increasingly perception of the houseless population. So these concerns include threats to employees' safety, safety concerns, diminished cleanliness and walkability, and the presence of human waste. In addition, the district has struggled with a perceived lack of clarity around the new services and planned development within the district. People just want to know what's going on, and they want a plan for dealing with it. So that's, those are two things that I'm navigating, again, most days in my conversations with business owners. Okay, so let's end on the successes of 2023. So the Downtown Oregon City Association benefits from its history as an established organization, along with new leadership and direction. By focusing our efforts in alignment with our mission of creating community and cultivating commerce, we're excited to share our successes as we navigate through 2024. A few of our most notable highlights include reimplementation of the Clean Team, consistent outreach initiatives, and more focused operations. So the Clean Team, we have a dedicated Clean Team staff that functions to not only maintain the cleanliness and walkability of downtown, but also serves as a visible symbol of our organization's outreach to the district businesses, owners, and community. So program reintroduction has been effective, beneficial, and universally very well-received. I haven't heard any complaints, which makes me very happy. Our outreach initiatives, so our outreach committee has been successful in establishing regularly scheduled business socials for our district stakeholders. These events work to provide a forum for our business community to hear from speakers and engage in discussions relevant to the most pressing matters addressing our district. So our next one coming up is in early March. It's March 6th. In that one, we are hosting the, a panel from the Miles Fiberglass, the Houseless Navigation Center.
Resource Center.
Resource Center, excuse.
Don't call it the Navigation Center.
The Houseless Resource Center. Thank you, Denise. Yes, that one is March 6th, and that one we have, we've already had a lot of interest in that one, so. Operations. In the past year, we've, we have identified and removed administrative inefficiencies, reengaged marketing efforts via our new social media accounts, regularly published community and stakeholder newsletters. In addition, our board has taken steps toward new member recruitments, board member recruitment. And that is all I have for you. I love this photo. Ryan took this photo. It's absolutely, absolutely gorgeous. There's my email, there's our website, and what questions can I answer for you all, please?
I'll go. I've got a question for each of you, and then a comment on what I'd like to see. How much interaction have you had with the resource people? Have you been involved in depth or in passing?
I would say I have met with Dan, and that's when we, he and I, I asked him to please come and talk to our business community just because there's so many unknowns about it. So I have been in contact, I'm following up regularly, and that's why we scheduled the business social with our community. So.
Does that meeting occur?
Pardon? March 6th. That one's March 6th. That's the business social on March 6th. It's not on our event calendar.
So these outreach meetings, do you attend those?
No, I do not attend.
I have attended them.
I think you've been to a couple.
You're an elected official. I knew, that's, that's economic development. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, it's usually issue-related, and I've attended several of them to basically just kind of hear what people are saying. And if there's city-related questions, I do try to answer them, but generally, it's a topic that's tangentially related to us, so.
See, I feel strongly that economic development on the part of the city, DOKA and the Chamber of Commerce need to be working hand and glove. And I don't know that that's happening. And what troubles me is, this is all about effective communication among those involved. And it's important, we're talking about vacancies and a possibility of vacancies. And we talk about, why do vacancies occur? Well, sometimes they occur because a building, a business has grown in size, needs a new building. What I, what I want to be aware of, I want you folks to be aware of, is when are these vacancies about to occur? I want to be ahead of them. Because what happens is, whether you take Miles Fiberglass, or if you want to call it the Bank Building, if we're not in there trying to make a placement, then we end up being the repository for social services. And I don't want that to be Oregon City's future. So getting ahead of it is key, and that means rubbing elbows, getting out there, talking to people, talking to each other, and finding out what's going on long before it happens. It's a simple conversation. You're the business owner, not the people that may be staffing the business, the owners. What's the future of your business? Do you intend to stay? Do you need to grow in size? Are you, do you have any moves intended? Make them aware of maybe vacant properties that we could place them in. But I don't know, and if those conversations are happening, then you need to let the city commission know because in my mind, it reflects upon how effective economic development is. And it affects your, your organization too, and the Chamber of Commerce. I want to avoid vacancies that end up becoming social services when they could be coming, contributing tax-paying entities within the city. So that's my thought, and I'd like to see that performance begin if it hasn't already.
Commissioner, I could not agree with you more about what you've just said. When I first started this, when I first started my remarks, I alluded to the fact that we've formed a coordination committee where all four of us totally meet on the big picture issues impacting the city. So we meet in one room at one time for a couple of hours each month to discuss the very issues you've just talked about. From the economic development point of view, we have business retention. So what that means is that we go, my office visits businesses, and we talk to them in their offices, the owners. And so we focus primarily on professional services, manufacturing, some of those businesses that provide primary jobs, jobs that provide benefits to their employees. And those, those businesses, as you know, pay a lot of taxes in terms of property taxes. So we do that. But that doesn't mean that we can't improve. But I don't want to leave you with the impression we don't do that.
Well, is that documentable? Can you say, here's who I called upon last month? Here's my sales calls?
Absolutely. Everything we do is documentable.
Well, that'd be interesting to know. I mean, it's an assessment of how effective is one of our branches, one of our departments.
But I'm, as I said, I'm glad that, I'm glad that we are now in the, we now have a situation where all four organizations are working together on a monthly basis and having conversations in ways that we haven't been before.
And hopefully, that's retrievable information for any to view if needed.
Well, these are, these are discussions.
Not just in your mind, or not just on a scratch pad. It's, it's in the form of a retrievable report.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
It's like a sales call report. Here's who I talked to, and here's what's going to happen. Here's an example. Say, we sat here the other night, and for the first time, we heard that the Resource Center is considering demolishing that building. What if they changed tact? What if they say, why should we incur the demolition cost? Well, maybe we could do something elsewhere on bare land. You have always taken the position, I don't have available square footages to attract, I think that's a, is that a 40,000 square foot building? I mean, it's a significant-sized building. Okay, do we have Plan B if they, if they take an alternate tactic? We have a manufacturing facility that is essentially one acre large.
Well, we don't have it. It's available to.
But we might end up with it.
But it doesn't belong to us, issue.
Well, I understand that. I'm not saying that, but I'm saying if it does occur, you have a plan to say, well, you know what? That's fine. We have a potential tenant for that. So those are, those are the kind of actions. I don't want everything that happens to us to be a surprise. I want to be ahead of it and on top of it. That's where I'm at. That's the end of my story. Thanks.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good, those are good comments.
Well, I know one of the things that, that you didn't say, but you have been doing, is that you've been making outreach to, there's only one or two realtors that seem to have all the listings downtown. And I know that over the time, we, the organization has reached out to them to kind of basically say this, and is just making that reconnection again. I know that when the US Bank Building was vacant, I had a conversation once a month for over eight months with the listing agent just because of that very topic that you're talking about. And he was candid in some cases. In other cases, he was holding everything close to his chest. And I said, look, you know, I just, and our director at the time also met with them and said, this is what we would like to see. The comment that I have gotten recently from several people who are directly affected by downtown is they have concerns, as I've expressed to you, that's passed on to me about some of the uses that are going in downtown. And are they really, I mean, again, they're retail, but when you get down to the specifics is what is causing people anxiety. And I said, well, here's the situation. We don't, back in the day, in planning, it used to list everything. You know, so you have a service station, a grocery store, a this, you know, a dress shop, blah, and it was a huge, long laundry list. And most jurisdictions like ours consolidated to say, it's retail. So we're, we will not be going back to that list. But I know there are at least three businesses that have caused a great deal of consternation with people who are downtown. And it's not, and it's primarily because they are not retail-facing businesses. And that's what we kind of have to get across to some of the listing people. I know the building down at the end of, the old telephone building at the end of Main Street at Fifth is for sale. I don't know what that means for the tenants, but it's kind of what you're talking about. We should be reaching out to that listing person and maybe get ahold of the owner and say, well, you know, are you just trying to get rid of it? Are you going to keep the tenants? You know, what?
I do. I met with Denise and Mick a month or so ago. And so that one in particular, they are, all the tenants are planning on staying. They have one vacant in there that they're having a trouble filling. But that one, the owner, I believe he owns three buildings in our district, and he's moving. So all three of his buildings are for sale. Yeah, so that's, I am doing that, yes.
See, and that's good information. When I ran the Sales Engineering Department for a $6 billion company, we had a saying, and that saying was, get in line and stay in line. You don't touch base with them one time and forget them. You're in there, you're a presence all the time. And that's how you succeed. I mean, I appreciate what the mayor just said she did. I think that's a wonderful piece of work by elected officials. And I agree with elected officials participate in that process, but I want our city staff, and I want your organization to be on it, because that is your job.
I had a relationship with the person. That's.
And you capitalize on those, because businesses are about relationships.
I knew him from before, so I've used my prior knowledge of him to say, hey!
Well, that's just my guidance to what I would call hand-to-hand organizations.
This topic is probably city and downtown, or downtown DOKA. But I want to kind of maybe refocus on it. We put a lot of energy into this idea of shared parking, and it comes up a lot every time we do anything with parking in downtown. So we took the, and in order to show that the city was active in that as well, we took the city hall parking lot and made it shared parking for evenings and weekends as a way to show a commitment to encourage other businesses to do the same. The largest parking lot on downtown, which was the Rivers Crossing Building, was the largest shared parking that we had. We've lost it since then. And I have a feeling I know why they didn't want to keep that as shared parking. And I think that's one of the things we really have to figure out. I don't know, I know the Clean Team is back. Is that, how is that being funded now? Is that through DOKA's just a budget, or is that subsidized?
That was through our, the public pool contract. So the main function of the Clean Team is to maintain the cleanliness of the public pool.
Right, the cycle. But there's a lot of downtown to keep clean, so.
There is, yeah.
So adding parking lots is a whole nother realm. But my feeling, or at least partly what I heard, is that some of the main issues with... But my feeling, or at least partly what I heard, is that some of the main issues with the shared parking was the mess, and that having people parking in that parking lot, and really having no one responsible for the cleanup. Um, and-
Are you talking about just garbage?
Yeah, garbage and, and, you know, people, yeah, and other things.
And other things, yeah. Let's see, let's see. Yes, gar, we'll just call it all garbage, okay?
So I, I, I want to, and I, I worry because I think we, we were successful in, in having a couple, and maybe, and that was the biggest one. And the fact that that failed doesn't, doesn't encourage others to take on this, this ability. And so I'd like to see a renewal of conversation about shared parking and how the city in Doka can partner in some way. Because to me, it feels like, okay, if the main issue was making sure the parking lot was clean, well, then we need to have someone cleaning those parking lots every week, you know, once a week or something. Um, and, 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 you know, if that's an extension of the clean team or something, I don't know. And if that's a partnership that can be done in some other way, we, we need, because I think, well, now people still don't know that they can't park in that parking lot. It became, it became such an iconic place-
Has sign been removed?
Oh, I'm sure it has, yeah. In fact, one of them had been removed before they, before it stopped being a parking lot. It was ripped down, but I, I, so, you know, how we build that back up and, and ensure the business owners that, okay, there is going to be some help with that issue. Because it definitely helps a lot to be able to use some of those spaces. And people got used to it and wanted to, you know, like, okay, well, we can't park there anymore? No, you probably shouldn't.
They have signs up that say you will be towed, which they always have had.
That doesn't stop people from, you know, doing it and thinking that it's, it's the given because they used to do it. Anyway, I'd, I'd like to see how we can renew that conversation and how to, how to support businesses in taking that, taking that on.
My, my one concern about that is, and it's, it's a gripe that I've had ever since I've moved here, is that I do not understand why the local business owners don't clean up in front of their storefronts. I'm not saying they all don't do it, but there's very few that do. And it's a matter of, you know, getting a broom out or whatever and just sweeping your sidewalk. And it's, I don't think it's Doka's responsibility to keep the storefronts clean. Um, you know, it's just like on a residential street, you know, if there's lots of leaves, you really, you know, we're supposed to clean the leaves up so people don't slip and kill themselves. So I, I get, I get a little frustrated when I get calls from some of the business owners saying, oh, well, there's such and such on the sidewalk. And I says, is it in front of your place? I said, then you need to clean it up. You know, if it's leaves, you know, whatever, dirt, I said, please just sweep in front of your place. It's, you know, it's, it's all about, you know, the presentation when you walk in, and if there's dirt piled up in front of the door and cobwebs and all of that, I mean, maybe people don't care, but it does make a difference when you see a business.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for the presentation. So staying on the same topic, so were you saying, just to clarify, that the clean team is mainly focused on the new public restroom?
Uh-uh. No, that's just a portion of it.
Okay, that's just a portion of it.
Yep, exactly.
And then on that note, how have things been going with the, since the installation of that new public restroom? I know there was a lot of misinformation out there at once it first started, and a lot of fears about how it might go. I know that it was something that we were all very excited about because it's something that visitors and consumers have been clamoring for, for a long time. So I'm curious to hear how that's been going.
Largely uneventful.
Good.
I know. Big thumbs up. Yeah, you know, it has been a handful of times that we've had some issue with it, but it's been, I believe it was installed in October, and really just a handful of issues with it. Um, it's, it's been received well. It locks up at, we lock it at six every night. So once, I mean, once the, you know, business traffic goes back up, it's, it's locked. And so we really haven't had hardly any issues with it. So yay.
That's great, too.
Yeah.
Um, and then the other one, this is a concern that I've relayed before, and since you've been in the position for a while now, I'm curious to hear how the recruitment efforts have gone. I know for you, having been a business owner on Main Street yourself, if you could talk about what your thoughts on Doka may have been previously, and, and what you're doing to help change that, and, and hopefully understand, and help us understand how recruitment and retention has been going since your tenure began.
For businesses?
Yes.
You know, that is a, that, we were struggling down there. I had a retail business down there. In the last year and a half, I believe we've had five retail go out, and the issues primarily are not enough foot traffic and, and higher rents. And so it's tough. Our restaurant industry seems to be doing okay. There's a couple of exceptions in there, but by and large, we're able to hang on to service and restaurant. Retail is really hard for us to hang on to right now, and I don't know what the solution is there. What, what we're doing is trying to increase the foot traffic and trying to get more visibility on the downtown district as a whole. But that is one of my biggest concerns about the courthouse going out as well, is just that, that takes that foot traffic away, which takes the vibrancy, even just the, the feel of downtown, it's going to change it. And so it's a big concern of mine. We lost a lot of retail in the last year and a half, and they're, they're struggling. They're struggling.
And in addition to that, and that was, that was all very helpful information, but when I meant, when I was talking about business retention, I was more meaning business, I guess, interaction with Doka and involvement with Doka.
Gotcha.
If you get, I'm sorry, I couldn't word it that better. And so if you could talk about how efforts to increase business interaction-
For sure.
Have gone. I've heard some great things for the short-lived tenure of the wayward market. I heard some great things about interactions. And it's very separate way that it penciled out, but I heard that it was a very good interaction with Doka, and so I was thrilled to hear that. Maybe you could talk about that.
For sure. I think one of the benefits that I, that I personally bring to the table is I was in that district already for five years. And so I already had relationships built with a good majority of the district, and it's just continued. Like, I mentioned in the presentation, I purposely park far away, so I walk on Main Street every day. I, I walk, I walk the whole district, right? On the elevator, like, I just like to walk and talk to whoever is out there. I also am very consistent in our email newsletter to our stakeholders, and we also have, you know, we have almost a 50% open rate on those emails, which is very good. And scheduling our regular business socials has also been really helpful. So, you know, a lot of people, well, not a lot, some business owners don't check their email, so I, and I know who they are, and I will go down and make a point to say, hey, this is happening, mark your calendars. Or if you're interested, please show up to this. So that is, outreach and engagement is, is very high on my list, and it will continue to be so throughout my tenure, yeah.
Good, that's great to hear. I appreciate hearing that. Because I know, uh, prior to the leadership change, I think there were complaints about that among business owners in the district. And so I'm glad to hear that, that follow-up engagement is there.
For sure. That's, that was one of my, my struggles with the organization as a business owner was the lack of communication. And so I've made a very clear point to communicate, over-communicate, if anything, with the businesses in particular.
Excellent.
Yeah.
I like hearing what you're doing. I think, you know, this commission and this city is focused on things like tourism, given whatever tourist entity manages this, a marketable product, which empty, empty storefronts aren't marketable, and things beyond restaurants are needed. My hope is that the private sector can move faster than government, because I'll tell you, government is cumbersome. Nothing happens here unless three of the five of us give direction to do it. I mean, that's just the, the way it is. And I understand that sometimes you get into your user groups and management by committee, but my hope is that you're a faster-moving entity and can respond and change the situations faster than we can. And I also hope that we, that you and your organization and others give our city staff assets to work with. And I understand what you're, I understand that, you know, staffing is a problem. I get all that. We've talked about that in separate, but work together, move quicker, and you know what? Initiative is, is rewarded. And I wouldn't mind seeing initiatives come forward from anybody. Thanks.
Just, I, I think it's obvious that retail is always going to churn downtown. Rick and mortar retail's struggling everywhere, and our downtown's no different, and it's got its, its own challenges, which kind of goes back to the importance of what Commissioner O'Donnell said, too. You know, we always want to have a bench of prospective tenants reaching out to, and we know there's still going to be, continue to be an exodus of small retailers from downtown that want to get out of downtown, not downtown, or is in downtown Portland that want to get out of downtown Portland, and we're a great alternative, so we just need to keep that effort. Because that, retail's always been that way, and it always will be that way. It'll always be, always be the hardest category to keep full. I don't really have any questions for you. I just want to say I was, I was very pleased with what I saw in the presentation, with your direction. I know you have spent a lot of time, since you've been in position, fence mending and trying to get everybody in the same boat, and I think you've made a ton of progress on that. And I, and I think with what you got laid out for 2024, I think now you, you know, you got the damage control done, and, and now we can move forward. And I, I look forward to what's going to happen, and, and we want to work with you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
So how many, how many days has it been?
That I've been here?
Yeah, on the, on the job. I remember reviewing your 60-day plan.
She's counting by hours.
Your 60-day plan, you had a, you had a 30-day plan, a 60-day plan.
Yep, I did. 90-day plan as well.
Yeah, so I think we're done with-
We are.
I mean, you've accomplished a lot in, within that. One of the things that I have, have discovered, and I've known for quite some time, and I think I've had a discussion with Mr. Graham about this, is that for some reason, and this, this is across the board on properties, people, you know, we are not downtown Portland, and our rents should not be reflecting downtown Portland, but there are people who own buildings downtown that somehow think that the magic bullet is to charge the same amount that they charge in Portland. And it's not the same retail climate. And I don't know how we can, you know, get across to people that, you know, in order, you know, would you, would you rather have your building vacant, or would you rather reduce your, your costs a little bit and get somebody in there that's consistent, that's going to be paying the rent every month, and helping them pay their mortgages or whatever? I, I don't get that. And to circle back to the other conversation that Commissioner O'Meara talked about, one of the big reasons why some of our industrial land has not been selling is that we have property owners who think their property is worth gold. And there are no services, there's no connections, other than the, you know, the substandard growth that goes in front of it. And that's why they're still sitting there, because nobody is going to pay that kind of price for raw land. And we have the same problem with some of the buildings downtown.
And, and that, and that has been an issue since I've arrived.
It's, it's been an issue forever.
Talked about it, even in our strategic plan. But I think the, the, one of the big issues that downtown is facing, and we can't underestimate it, and you all know it, is the courthouse. And I know that there are going to be initiatives at some point with the courthouse, but can't stress enough that we would not want to see an emergency. An emergency whereby we come right to the edge of seeing the courthouse still-
Vacant.
Vacant. And the county owns it, we don't own it, but it's important that they do something with it, or turn it over to us to do something with it. And it would be a shame, and I just want to mark my words here, it'd be a shame to go right to the edge, and then there's an emergency.
We have, we have another meeting scheduled shortly with the county again, because I have been talking to Chair Smith behind the scenes, and I, I have tried everything to get her to understand. She tells me she understands, but I said, but you are not helping us move this forward. I, I, personally, I feel that I have been talking to them about this for three years. And I feel like, you know, I personally feel like I'm, I have my toes over the edge of the cliff, and we're not there yet. But again, we've been, we started this initiative to get them to help us three years ago. Tony's been talking about it longer than that. And I just, I don't know, that's why we're going to meet again, to say, look, we cannot get to the point to where you are, the moving trucks are in front of the building, and it's going to sit there. I said, we just, we cannot do that. And I, you know, that's one of my, as a resident, as a taxpayer, and as an elected person, it's one of my higher priorities. It's, it's, it's something I've been talking about since I got on the commission. I was talking about it as a planning commissioner, that we knew that this is, was a goal of theirs, you know, before this commission, group of commissioners came in, the previous commission and the previous commission before that. They've been talking about this. We know this. But yet they're not, I mean, going to emphasize cooperation and teamwork on this. That's where I want to go, and what I've been saying the whole time, and we've all been saying. So maybe you guys push from one side, we push from the other side, and maybe we'll get somewhere in the middle. So are there any other questions for Giuliana?
Just that we should have target dates when the new facility, the new courthouse is going to be occupied, and we should work backward from that.
We've been-
And we should all hit on them every, every day.
We've been trying to do that as well. That's one of the questions we have for, you know, we know when they'd like to be in, and, you know, they're, they're, they're kind of on schedule, but, you know, you know how, you know how building construction goes.
Well, I know this. Sometimes your fate is in the hands of others, and I, that's a hard thing to accept. But also know, this is a lesson from business. A guy wrote an article one time about outcome-based organizations, and he said, you either get a favorable outcome, or you get excuses. We're not in the business of excuses. That's a hard line, but that's a line to live by.
Okay. Thank you, Giuliana. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I hate to be pessimistic, but I think if you look at the calendar, we, it is going to be vacant for some period of time.
Yeah, and I-
We're, we're past the time when we could have made a smooth transition, so I, we need to start thinking about, you know, what's our interim plan during however long it's going to be that it's going to be vacant, because-
We've been thinking about it.
Well, we need to, we need to think about it more than behind the scenes.
I agree. Well, that's, that's-
We need to get visible about it.
Well, I know. That's, that's where, that's where the business associations can do that. You know, we're trying to do, you know, I'm trying to do, and he's trying to do, we're trying to do a little diplomacy, because I can honestly tell you what I'd really like to say about it. That, you know, tires screwing around with it.
Publicizing the situation is not a bad thing.
Yeah. Exactly.
Well, one thing that I would be curious about is what our end goal is. Because I know that we would like to be a part of the conversation. I don't think that there's agreement on whether we want it to be shifted to our hands personally. That's something where I have issues, because it would be such a liability infrastructure-wise. And in fact, I, I would argue that they would have to pay us for us to take it because of all the liabilities it carries. But at the same time, I would like it to stay in, or at least the plaza to stay in public hands.
That's, that's not the issue. They, they already agreed to that.
Right. But what I'm saying is, I'm curious, but we as a city, having a united message, would be helpful for us to be saying, because I don't know if we're necessarily all there at the point where it's that we want to be the ones owning it, so much as that maybe we'd like to be more a part of the conversation to help find a good use of that building.
Yeah. So in a nutshell, I'll keep it very simple. What, what I have talked to Commissioner Smith about is giving us whatever control of the building, so we can start going out and soliciting for someone to occupy the building. We can do that much better than they can, I feel. If, you know, whatever that involves, I'm not asking us to take it over or anything. I mean, like, we be the owners, but I think we need to be in the driver's seat in terms of saying to the county, this is what we need downtown.
Great.
And what we don't need is a big vacant building that's not activated, that you have to have 24/7 security on, because we all know-
It gets cluttered.
Exactly.
Well, it's a big vacant block.
It's, it's basically the whole-
It's not just that, it's just not that building, it's the entire block.
Yeah, well, it's that building, and it's the Holman Building, which is next to it, which is the law library, will eventually be moving as well. What I also asked her on several occasions, and also Administrator Schmidt, is that are some of the other social service buildings that are down further on 12, near the transit station, some of those are looking at transitioning and moving? So again, they own that one too.
Well, I appreciate that, and that gets to my concerns, because I didn't know if we were necessarily pushing for acquisition, which again is something that I would be really wary of, so...
I think the first question is, what's an acceptable use of this?
Absolutely. And that's not me being to be a part of it.
And that is why we wanted to update all the feasibility studies, which is what they said no to. But we do have the opportunity to try to apply for that type of a grant again. And again, maybe, you know, lightning will strike, and we can get them to agree to allow us to do that in cooperation with the Downtown Association and Chamber to update. Because the structural stuff is basic, it just needs to be updated. And a couple of the other studies that they've done all need to be updated.
That might be a big ticket. I mean, I don't want to end up with a lawn ornament, you know, I want something that we can do something with.
The building is eligible to be on the National Register, it's got his works significance. There are substantial tax credits, not just the 10%, but there are other tax credits that accrue that could help put together a package of funding, which is why I'm hoping we can find a master developer who's got experience and rehab tax credits that could help put together a package to do that building. I mean, that's kind of the, and I'm thinking about the work that I had worked on with the city when we were looking at the Multnomah County Courthouse, and it was kind of the same, it's not sinking, but it had some substantial problems that were not having to do with geotech, it was interior stuff that was going on with it that everybody said, "Oh, we can't do anything with that." Well, it's happening. But it takes the right person and the right company to look at something like that and not see complete and total disaster, but see that it's an opportunity. And I think there is an opportunity, I'm not even getting into what the uses will be, but it's an opportunity that we need to get our friends at Platteville County to understand.
It could qualify as bladed, possibly.
Well, it already falls under urban renewal, and in the court outcome, we've got money, so, all right.
Sorry, one more thing.
No, don't apologize.
The grant that DOKA wanted to apply for, and the county wouldn't sign off on, is that still available? And would there be any chance of you trying to work behind the scenes, or any of us work behind the scenes to get them to sign off on that?
Well, there's another cycle, grant cycle that's coming up with...
So it's a annual cycle?
Yeah, so it's a matter of us touching base with our contacts at the State of Story Preservation Office. It qualifies under a couple of different programs. Diamonds in the rough is definitely, because it's definitely rough. And then it was...
I'd like to see us make another run at that.
Yeah, I agree, we've got the other paperwork, it's just a matter of updating, you know, minimally updating the paperwork. Like I said, it was ready to go. So, another project near and dear to my heart, the 20-year facilities master plan. And I'm not being facetious about it.
So thank you, so we're going to revisit the facilities master plan. I'd like to welcome up Margaret Wilson, Principal of Sarah, sorry.
S E A, oh my God.
All those S's, S E's. And Brandon Dole. So we presented this in our December 12 work session. So in between then and now, we've tried to take what we heard from that last work session and kind of find some of the decision points around what we heard, what we think are still outstanding. So we're going to focus this part on some of those larger project issues that we didn't quite get through last time when we were discussing, as well as what we think are some of like the natural kind of stopping points for this work that will then launch into later work to come, depending on whether it's a shorter-term project, a medium-term project, or some of these longer-term projects for which we have more time for. So we're going to go ahead and turn this, I'll go ahead and turn this over, and we'll go from there.
Thanks, Tony, good to see everybody, a lot of familiar faces. Again, Brandon Dole, Scott Edwards, I think, Dole? Dole, D O L E, yeah, Dole. With me is Margaret Wilson. So hopefully you recognize us, and you're ready for tonight. Okay, great.
That's a big question, though.
It is, we're ready.
So we'll go back through just kind of where we are, just really quickly. We were here a couple of months ago to review the 20-year master plan and those drafts. We went and did a site evaluation for all of the buildings that are on the list, and then we have kind of worked with staff to basically kind of do an assessment. And we have a couple of questions that we would like you to review and get some direction on to help us inform kind of the pieces that we are continuing on for part of the 20-year master plan.
Any questions, though, before we get started? Anything, any reminders from last time? I'm sure there was a lot of conversations post-presentation, but we're good?
I'm still at the same place where I was when I chatted with you about it before. So my position has not changed.
That's good to hear. Okay, well, we're just going to pick up where we left off and go.
So we had some pretty robust discussion about the pool building and the end of the Oregon Trail building. Both have pretty severe deferred maintenance for both of those buildings. And those are your two biggest needs for the city.
Are any of those fire and life safety issues, building code issues?
Yes.
Or just some?
Fire and life safety, you are under the current, or the old code for fire and life safety. As far as like building seismic and stuff like that, that's also going to be under the old code. So you're not in current code for either one of those buildings. As far as maintenance, is the two kind of big points on both of those buildings. The pool in particular, the pool itself and the mechanics for the pool, electrical, mechanical, water for all of the pool is in, on its last legs.
You're saying it's past its shelf life?
Yes.
Well passed. Actually, you've been very fortunate with how long it's lasted, with where it's at today.
End of the Oregon Trail, for that building in particular, there is pretty significant severe deferred maintenance across the board. From what we've heard, those buildings were constructed for a duration that was supposed to be a limited time, however, they've been there for quite some time. The way that they were designed, water mitigation is your biggest concern at that building.
And just to go back to what you were asking, Mayor Grubbs, you know, we didn't do a full code assessment on each building, but what we would tell you is you're not currently compliant with code. And if you were to do any improvements, you would be required to bring them into compliance.
But isn't there a degree?
It depends on what you do, you know, there's different triggers and certain thresholds that we can work with then. But depending on what you do at the building, other services and things you do there, you might incur that trigger. There are also things like accessibility ADA upgrades that you would be required to do, and almost, you know, you would want to do in general. Hopefully that helped add to the list.
This is probably repetitious, because this is what I said last time, this is what I'll always say. To me, it's always a cost-benefit analysis, right? I mean, do I repair, do I replace? What are my ongoing costs in terms of ongoing maintenance, life expectancy? And actually, the main thing to answer before you do anything is what is it you want out of that building? So those are my thoughts, but it's always a cost-benefit analysis versus what do you want this to do? How long, those are all cost-benefit equations.
Correct, and we would agree, and I think essentially that's our conclusion and what we would recommend you move forward. And you can see that here, we feel that you have made that determination and decided that, you know, begin the public outreach, begin the process of going out and engaging the community on services, amenities, they'd like to see, location of these facilities, wherever they'd be best suited, and ultimately gets a public support for them. These are big lifts, there's going to be a lot of involvement cost-wise, and ultimately, to get it across the board, you're going to need public buy-in and so forth.
But do you start with an analysis of what it would cost to refurbish? So that when people say, "Why don't you just fix up what we have," you can call that to the front, say, "Here's where our estimates are."
Yeah, I agree, I think that would be a part of the assessment, part of the next step.
Okay.
Yeah. Keep in mind, our work was very high-level and built on facility assessments done prior, and limited time and resources at each building. So I think you're correct, Commissioner O'Donnell, that you would add that, that feasibility, what does it look like now, what are those costs, what are the implications on, you know, tearing it down or renovating them, yeah, definitely.
Yeah, I know as far as the pool, you know, either people have talked to me over the years, you know, they've got stars in their eyes, "Oh, we want a big Olympic-sized swimming pool, we want this one." You know, again, I'm trying to figure out how we right-size these things for our community. I am, I will say this, I am not interested in providing facilities for everybody else and their dog outside of this community. I'm interested in right-sizing it for Oregon City. And we keep getting this, "Well, oh, if we did this, we could have tournaments, we could have..." I just say, "Wait a minute, you know, what do we need for our citizens?" And if there's a residual that it could be used for other things, but I really am focused on, again, right-sizing it for us. I'm not, you know, trying to build the Lake Oswego Taj Mahal, that they're, whatever they're building over there, and, you know, it's just, it's a cost-benefit analysis for me.
And with the, particularly with the aquatic rec centers, we see that, you know, the pool itself isn't really, it doesn't support the building. You usually have to have something else that generates that revenue. And, you know, to add to your comment there, ultimately, with all your, with all the surrounding communities and the effort they're putting in aquatic rec facilities, you really wouldn't have to do that. You would really be building something right-sized for Oregon City and expecting Oregon City to sustain that and support that.
So, yeah, a question particularly on those two facilities, which are both parks and rec facilities. And that master plan is coming April. Is there any of that information as far as alternatives or costs? And that, because I know Bureau Veritas did some work in that regard. Is there anything in that report that is going to help us with these kind of decisions?
We actually took a lot of the information that we discussed with the facilities master plan and incorporated into our C I T plan, and incorporated deferred maintenance assessment associated with all of our facilities as part of that parks master plan. So we have projects specifically based on what we're discussing right now that we're hoping to fund with our capital improvement plan to address some of these things in regards to like public engagement and park development.
You may need to come on up.
And that'll be part of when we see the master plan?
Yes.
So maybe for the record...
We adore you, Kendall, so... Yeah.
And what we understand coming out of that master plan is an emphasis or a need for access to water. So again, that's why we've elevated, not only just because of the condition of the pool itself, but we also understand that the community and parks and recs, that's what they've identified. Access to water is the highest priority, and the best way to do that is through an aquatic rec facility. So we do see alignment between the two master plans.
Just don't know that we'll have a number.
No.
Right, that we're going to have to get to, that we need more steps to get more clarity as to what exactly is going to be the final number, right? That there's going to be a component of the existing, right, versus the new, right? Probably maybe another two or three different versions in between there.
Well, it seems to me, Tony, don't we need to get the parks master plan done? Because I kind of see it in a hierarchy, you know, the facilities is overall, and then we have the other things underneath it that basically feed into that. So it seems to me, you know, I don't want to prove this or finalize this before we have that done. Because it seems to me that's the cart before the horse a little bit, where the carts are going along simultaneously.
I don't think we're talking about finalizing. I think you're talking about providing decision-makers with the type of information you need about relative costs, place versus renovate, expected life facility, consideration of ongoing maintenance costs, all those things would be part of that total equation that would be presented to decision-makers as one component of the overall master plan. Because in the end, it's like, what can you afford to do, and what can you not?
I think it becomes a, I think it becomes a project, a standalone project out of, it's a product of this facilities master plan as well as the parks and rec master plan, right? It's going to say, you know, there's going to be some kind of a statement in there about a pool facility. And that we're going to need to go do that work and have that conversation as to what specifically that pool facility is. What it is, how big it is, where it is, how we're going to pay for it, right? I think, so, you know, approving the facilities master plan and approving the parks and rec master plan isn't necessarily going to answer that question. It seems like a product of those, where then you dive in with specificity to create a plan to implement over time. Because, I mean, you know, regardless, you know, you probably, I don't know if you have the specs on Lake Oswego, but I think the last time I saw it was 46 million.
Yep, yep.
And that is a very simple building, not a Taj Mahal.
I just like to tease your book.
No, you're more than, yeah, you know, but no, it's the cheapest and best way we could do that building, and it still comes with that type of price tag.
Do they currently have a pool?
Yeah.
That's what I thought, this is...
They have it at the high school.
Yeah, the high school.
And it's a partnership with the school district.
Correct, yeah, it's one of the ways that they fund that, the schools and the tournaments. Yeah, again, it's a model that we see. And I think for our effort, along with city staff effort, we want to make sure the two master plans are in sync, and they're not in contradiction to each other, right? So if the parks master plan comes out and says, "Hey, as a community as whole, we need access to water," whatever that may be, and then on the facility set, we're going to back that up by saying, "Your current pool is really beyond its life, it's probably not the best location, let's go forth and figure out, you know, from a community aspect, public engagement aspect, the feasibility, and how we actually move through the next step." So both master plans would point to that same next step, if that makes sense.
You have to look at it from a historical standpoint, and you can speak to this too. At the time, it was placed there, it was the right, you know, location for the community. The community was substantially smaller, and a lot more people walked to the pool than they do drive to the pool.
And they've taken a high enough look at it, knowing that it's probably not the most ideal location for our new pool. Again, so we've made some of these assumptions and conclusions, which has led to this decision to say, "Go forth and create, make a project."
Well, I'm not advocating for not having a pool, so don't misunderstand what I'm about to say. But I mean, it'd be curious to know, what function does a current pool provide? You know, I know there's some value to it in many ways. Who are the users? I don't know if the school uses it for events, like swim events or whatever. Who will be the participants in the financing of this as users? So I mean, you know, the decision is starting, I mean, this is almost like the boat ramp discussion. "We can do without it, well, I don't think we can." Or two, "We want to build something to this extreme." So don't call me up and say I'm...
Somebody will misinterpret it and air it on the record and say, "Oh, Commissioner O'Donnell doesn't want to have a pool."
Well, I'll tell you what, a pool saves lives. And I can speak for that personally, it saved mine.
It's real interesting, just contrasting between different jurisdictions in different states. Almost every high school in my school district has a pool. And it's not the same in Oregon, for sure, so, next question.
So what we'd like to get at, oh, go ahead, Tony.
Oh, I was just going to say, so, you know, based on our conversations last time, as well as where we think this project is, that's why we put "decided" on pool and end of the Oregon Trail. Is because, you know, I think we've gotten to the point to acknowledge that we need, these are two high-priority buildings that we need to focus on in the short term to come up with a plan. And that plan is through some type of a public engagement process that provides more specificity and engagement around those two specific questions.
Well, in my mind, the ending of the Oregon Trail has a similar decision tree. You know, I mean, what does it contribute to the community? Who are the users? What, is it a standalone financially successful entity? Is it marginal? Are we substantive? You know, those are the very decisions that need to be made. What does it add to the community? That's going to be a hard look.
Are you talking about that being incorporated into this report? Or as a separate conversation?
As a separate conversation.
I think it's the next step.
Yeah, on that facility alone.
Kicking off of the next conversation.
Yeah.
So it feels like we're all in a consensus that for those two facilities...
Well, I was just going to say, the only thing I would question on that side, I think we've made the determination that we are going to provide aquatic services.
Right.
The other part of that, the extent, that's still a discussion that we have to have.
Yes.
But I would update that, because I think we're, I think we have a consensus that we are going down that.
So that seems like that's a consensus for those two facilities, move forward with the next step, and we'll articulate the verbiage a little bit better. You know, future lines.
Yeah, so one of the other decisions that we think we heard last time was future lines of the cemetery services, that we were not going to expand surface lines for the cemetery, that we were basically going to replace it like-for-like to what we currently have. For instance, we are not going to be talking about having funerals at that location. It will be a location that we could have conversations about burial planning, but we're not going to be expanding the service lines for the cemetery.
So we're not going to have our own mortuary? So we're not going to have our own mortuary?
We are not.
More for the viewing?
Yes. Yeah. One of the other discussion points that we talked about but didn't necessarily come to full agreement is whether we want to combine or separate cemetery staff, for instance, funeral services from cemetery operations and park and rec operations on the same site. So we kind of have two different options here. Where the existing house is that we have basically planning for funeral services, we could replace that in a like-for-like kind of situation. We could also, on the south side of the site, create a kind of node for cemetery operations, park and rec operations in a separate building. That would then separate the kind of two service lines for the public. They would be able to come and have their funeral services without necessarily seeing all of the, kind of utilitarian uses of the operations within the same site.
So couldn't you do something where you make one facility, but you have sort of back of house where the, those staff people would come in a different entrance? They would be connected in some way because they still have to kind of communicate with each other. But again, you have front of house stuff which is, would be completely separated, say, separated, but except for staff being able to go back and forth, and you have back of house. To me, that makes a lot of sense.
So that's kind of what we're talking about here is the combine or the separate. So in that instance, that would be the combine. You would have one building on the, on the site, you would still have pretty heavy machinery coming in and out of that site, close to people arriving to burial, to burial loved one.
Your backhoe to do the.
Okay, so I'm confused. Why would, why would the storage or the equipment have to be next to the building?
Well, that's, that's what we're calling.
Imagine.
There's two options.
I wasn't talking about storage and material.
For staff.
And equipment. I mean, so we would build one building versus you would take kind of your, your funeral retail support, and it would be a standalone building, kind of like in the house or a new building. And you would take all of the operations, maintenance, vehicles, and put them on the southern part of the site, kind of away from that entrance. So that they're kind of their own area, can move around, you know, have their outdoor storage away from, you know, the, the funeral process that's up front, whether it's, you know, buying a, a plot or, you know, setting up a funeral or whatnot. Or you put, or you have one building with all of that in there.
You know, Willamette National, so the current, the current situation is you have that house with operations in the house and then the warehouse building behind it, right? Imagine that in a brand new facility, right? You have all of that effort, you have everything that manages and operates on the cemetery site in one building. The other option is to break those two things apart, have that upfront customer service front of house in one location, and then all of operations, all the tools, parks and equipment, the staff that does all the digging in the ground, the mowing of the grounds, all the bulk material, have that separate. And the reason why we think those are two situations is a combined facility may not fit where the current house is. You may actually have to flip where the main entrance of the cemetery is to the south due to how much land you have down there, right? Because around the house, you have plots and the intent to have more plots around there. So our concern, you know, looking down the line, if you built that facility that is right sized, you know, it, it meets all the current needs and aspirations, you may not be able to do that right there. So we want to give you a couple of options and figure out what is better in terms of the use of the property. And then also, what is that experience like, not only for staff, but for the resident or the, you know, the, the customer coming to actually do the burial, right?
Well, anybody's been to Willamette Falls, I mean, Willamette National knows how they do it. They got a separate maintenance facility and they have a separate and very dignified facility for those who are there to mourn or pass, passage of their loved ones. That's what I'll do, that's what I'm in favor of. You take the heavy equipment, you put it down the other end of the place, and you put your supporting staff, they can be down there too. But those who tend to the mourners and those who show up, they can be in a separate building. I mean, that's just dignity.
Are the, are the customer facing staff people, are, are they dedicated to that or is there a crossover to where, you know, where they're going to need to access the equipment or the other people that might be in another building on the other end of the site?
So you're asking that the, are they going to need access to that equipment in order to, to take care of the customer service? It can, it can be separate. Because right now, we, we currently have like our offices in front and then we have like a pole barn in back. So if, if we're just looking to separate the equipment and keeping staff in the same area, that, that can be, be worked out. We can't have like separate places for all the heavy equipment and where, where that can be stored and accessed, and then like a front facing area where there's customer service and maybe staff be in the back end of the facility who can go out and perform the functions.
Well, how many square feet do you think you need for cemetery specific equipment?
That's a good question.
Well, it's a question that needs to be answered at some point, not tonight.
You can imagine the scenario where you take the house and you renovate the house, you know, someone coming to make their funeral arrangements, it's a little bit more homely, a little bit more appropriate scale, and then you focus on building something that's operations focused on the southern side, right? We can all see that.
I, I think the house has to go. I mean, I've been in it and it just is not, it was appropriate for when they started using it, but I don't think it's appropriate anymore. I don't know how much more you can remodel it to try to make it something that it isn't.
Sure, yeah, yeah, definitely. So for our group, are we able to make a decision tonight or a?
Consensus.
Or consensus, excuse me, of the two options, right? Separating those uses or consolidating those uses?
You heard, you heard my thoughts.
Yes, sir.
I feel the same way.
I agree. Separating?
Separating.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, I think this is a good place to kind of, I mean, right, brings this to a close, because one of the things we, you know, Kendall did fund with, and we'll hopefully get to, is, you know, a cemetery master plan. Looking at, so we'll be able to come back and revisit this with more specificity as to what the needs specific to the cemetery are. With this as kind of our guide to kick that kind of thought process off of design site, right? Gives us a good place to start from.
Brandon will remember this. I mean, even when you have facilities and you have your equipment somewhere, you got your, your staff who comes in and needs to wash up or get cleaned up. I mean, that would be integrated to the equipment part of the building, I think.
Correct.
I, I can go either way. I think either option has, has, has merits. It's, it's what would be the most cost effective is where I'm, I'm going to shoot right down the middle.
And I, I think getting to that is something that Kendall had said, is something that I was leaning toward is having the separation with the equipment, but not necessarily with the staff. So if there was an opportunity to have a facility, a separate facility just for the equipment, not necessarily where the staff would be, but where they would go to, to pick them up and drop them off, but making sure that staff is together, because I do think that there is a benefit to having all the staff under one roof. I think that would also be a good way to go.
Yeah, that's what I was saying about back of house, not the ones that are doing the funerals, but the staff that deals with everything else.
But in terms of having a separation between the operations.
And the equipment, yeah.
I, I support that, so yeah.
I don't have a problem with the equipment being a little ways away. And you talk, we talked about the other access point that we have to the cemetery, and, you know, we've never really utilized that as much as we could, so that, we have that option, which is great. All right, as much as we're going to do on this for tonight.
Only up to you. Now, we're going to keep going, a few more.
All right, so the community development building eventually will be consolidated. We have kind of two major options for the consolidation, is to either put them over at First Street or to put them at a future city hall location. In general, the, if we moved them to further, there's a couple of other pieces that kind of need to move, move around if we're going to push them to kind of a future city hall location.
What is that an option?
At First Street?
Yes.
Because when we, when that building was constructed and designed, it has about three thousand square feet of shell expansion space upstairs.
Yeah, upstairs, yeah, I remember that, of course.
And there was, it was limited, but there was some forethought in how you do that down the line. It's adequate space, you would have to poke some holes, you know, in walls and get windows and daylight in there, but fairly straightforward to do that.
So currently, community development is right across the way here, right?
What are we going to do with that building? It's, that's part of the equation here, right? We know that you have a roundabout, you have some improvements coming down the line at that intersection, and that's going to encroach on all the surrounding properties.
I mean, we just improved that how many years ago?
Yeah.
Well, this is.
That's, that's why I'm questioning, why, why are we trying to move that?
Yeah, well, this is, this is, while it says short term here in the decision, this is, this is long-term movement. This is not a priority building right at the moment. The building's fine, our current city hall is fine, you know, but this is, you know, thinking about what, where do we become as that city? Because at some point, you know, we, you know, I think part of this discussion is, do we want more of a campus up here, moving city hall up here eventually? Right, so those were, there were some preliminary discussions about that. But with that comes, what do you do with, with, with planning and building, right? Because at some point, if we do build up here, that building would go down the line, right? So when we started this conversation a couple of years ago, you know, Public Works wasn't into First Street yet, we had, you know, we were out of room, right? Moving into First Street cleared up a lot of space availability at, at city hall on Center Street, and then we have this building as well. So, you know, this is more of a conversation for setting us up down the line. This is not, this is not like the conversation around like the pool in the end of the Oregon Trail. Right, this is, this is just thinking, where do we want to be? We've talked about this being the spot for city hall someday, long-term, but we've only, we've never really made any decisions around that. It's just kind of been hypothetical, so we're just trying to push that conversation a little bit further.
And this, this might be one of the more cost recoverable situations though, because I remember when we built the, the building that you were involved with, I mean, structurally, it can support this on the second floor. You're talking about windows and dividers and stuff, and probably it's not that expensive in the grand scheme of things compared to others. It's a small expenditure. There's a building there that with the courthouse going in over here, I'm sure that there's legal people that would love to have their offices there, maybe in the interim. So maybe as an interim solution, it gets rented out to a law firm who can support the courthouse here and we can offset our costs down there, which will be, like you say, in the grand scheme of the other projects we're talking about, these are minimal costs.
Maybe it's where community court goes in, since we've talked about with our police department, having a different court situation for.
I think we're sitting at community court.
No, this is, this is, it's a different type of court than the regular municipal court. But, but yeah, so I mean, I, I guess, you know, in, in one way, in deference to Mr. Lewis, I, I think that maybe having some planners over there by those engineers could be a real positive influence, because, you know, we know how, he's bringing it, same bringing it. So the, the engineers seem sometimes to get really stuck in their, you know, and, and you know, they're not, they're not as flexible as they could be, whereas planners, you know, are just, you know, we're just, we think about the world and everything, you know, we're not just thinking about rows and sewers and pipe bursting and, so it could be a good influence.
And we're trying to encourage engineers to get out of the office.
That's right, that's right.
I'll have to tell you a joke later about the difference between architects and engineers. I won't do it here, but it's not likely to talk about.
I, I think, I think I may have heard that.
Hypothetical costs versus real costs?
Hey, well. In addition to the very merited reasons that you just gave, I think having a one-stop area for people and the convenience of being able to go look at your permits and, and talk to Public Works, talk to Planning and Building, would be a huge asset for residents, because having all of those campuses separated is, I, I mean, I haven't had this experience personally, but I, I can understand how it could be just an inconvenience.
Yeah, it, it was together when we worked in that department. We were all there together, so.
Yeah, because I think that's, you know, I think that's really what drove the discussion about First Street, was trying to get the business groups together that work a lot together. You know, the one, and you see it on the cons here with First Street, is just the parking up there.
Yep.
Is, is limited when you think about bringing all of planning and building up there, plus the customers that would potentially come. You know, when we talked about, you know, if we move this into, let's just say, let's just, for, for, for this conversation that we decide this is going to be the campus, someday we're going to build city hall here, we build that city hall, and we put planning and building in a facility here, you know, what is that availability to, you know, essentially have like a, you know, how you, you know, you consolidate that contact with the public, right?
I think, as I recall, and John, you know, again, this is a credit to you, when you showed us a very preliminary drawing of the roundabout when I was on planning commission and then first came on the commission, it, it doesn't come super close to the, to that building, but it's, it's kind of right there, but yeah, I mean, it would be.
Well, it starts to take out a lot of that parking.
Yeah, on the other, on the, the.
Right, yep.
Plaid pantry side. Yes, on the plaid pantry side, but it doesn't take it out over here. But when you're talking about a campus, you mean the vacant parcel over there.
Well, I mean, this whole, we own everything, right?
Well, yeah.
Where does it go? I mean, that's a future conversation, if that's where we want to go.
We've got a nice entryway there, and so I'm, I'm thinking it's behind us, so to speak, instead of it being used right now as a dog park. So nothing against dogs.
Crystal ball's always cracked and clouded, but looking at it in plan, three hundred foot level, that makes sense. Expand the buildings, expand the parking, now you've got that campus and you've got the connectivity across, seems like an easy level.
I did have a dumb question. I noticed the last few times I've been at, at First Street, generally there aren't a lot of cars in the parking lot, but the last few times I've been there, all the parking adjacent to the street has been full. And I haven't really seen that there's, you know, I don't know if the employees are parking there, or, I'm not saying it's a bad thing, I'm just saying that I didn't see the commiserate activity of the cars generate, you know, like people hanging out at the counter and doing whatever. So I was just trying to figure out, because usually when I go there, there's like no cars in that parking lot unless somebody's at the front counter, so.
I, I guess, I, I'm glad to hear you say that this is a long-term move, because I, I just don't see the urgency with all of the other things we've got on the plate. We've got two perfectly serviceable buildings.
But we need to plan.
That we spent money on recent, fairly recently. So I, I'm real reluctant on this one. And as to the parking, I intentionally drove the loop of First Street yesterday morning on my way to an Optimus Club meeting and looked at parking lots. There's parking all over the place. We would, I would think could lease parking from one of the other businesses in that area. There's, there's just parking everywhere, all on First Street.
That was actually a discussion at the very beginning, when we were building that building, there was a discussion about renting parking across the street.
Across the street, right, across the street.
Straight across the street, yeah.
At, there was a vacant lot across the street, that when I was on the planning commission, we approved a building for a cabinet making, for a cabinet shop.
It didn't go.
On that grassy area and it never, it never went anywhere, so, you know, if we, if we got to the point where we needed to buy something, maybe that'd be a possibility. But I just think we have to be able to lease with all, all that parking around there.
So given this is, you know, way down the line, right, and when we think of a new city hall, we think of that's probably the last thing you do in, in close to that twenty year mark.
Hopefully.
Hopefully so, but yeah, in terms of sequence of events, that would be the last domino to fall. Thoughts, comments on the consolidation, keeping them separate campus?
Can we punt?
Yeah, do we punt on this?
Like, you know, like I said, the ones we addressed earlier are the, are the more short-term urgent, you know, this was just more of just kind of that longer-term thinking.
I think consolidation should be as part, part of our long-range future, that, that we should move towards that, but slowly. I think it makes a lot of sense and it, it's really, to me, it gets down to the issue of customer service.
Yeah, but the question is which ones? Future city hall?
I'm talking about First Street.
Yeah, okay.
Consolidating the, the C D D into there eventually.
That's what I would support.
Yeah. I think we keep the relocation of city hall as a, it's there, but it's on the backburner, it's not a high priority, but.
Okay.
Something to keep in our, in our rearview mirror, that we know we want to do it eventually, but it's just timing and dollars.
Yeah, you might find yourself down the line wondering why you would need a new city hall. city hall, right, at that point, so...
That's a fair comment.
Yeah, I mean, if you, yeah, if you really think of what you have in this facility...
Yep.
If you think of consolidating, you know, planning, building, and, um, engineering and operations in one facility, what would live in City Hall?
Yeah, very little.
Very little. And does it warrant building something shiny and new and brand, and large?
Yeah.
Um... Center Street.
Center Street. So part of the short-term plan is to basically fully vacate Center Street by moving the storage that is there in the de-camp facility to another, um, to Mountain View Reservoir. Um, the question is, what do we want to do with Center Street when it is fully vacated from its current use?
The first question is, what's our timeline for getting out of Dodge?
That was my question.
It's the question we've asked all along.
What is fully vacated? When does that occur?
Yeah.
So the obstacle there to make that facility fully vacant is, really, you need to build out a new de-water de-camp facility, right? Right now, that's what Operations uses there, and they, they do have some storage there. It's very available.
And what does that component do?
It's a de-water facility, so if you can imagine, uh, Operations pulls a lot of material on the ground, that material has a lot of moisture and water in it. It's heavy to, uh, it's heavy to offload that material, right, when it's got all that water and moisture and weight, so, um, I'm simplifying it.
And where is it going now? Are we talking lower yard or upper?
It currently exists in the lower yard. We would like to see it relocated and reconstructed at Mountain View Reservoir. If we can do that, and we feel that, and based on, um, historical plans that the city has done, Mountain View Reservoir...
Is there a slideshow coming with this?
Yeah. But the goal would be to get Public Works Operations out of, out of Center Street.
And there's no opportunity to consolidate that at First Street? Is it, are we talking a watch-down? Is that what you're talking, or a vacation of a...
No, de-camp.
So, our biggest...
Turn the mic over that way.
Our biggest use of Center Street right now, that is, is, that we think...
Lower yard.
The lower yard. That we think can be accommodated at Mountain View is a de-camp facility. The reason we can't do it at First Street is, one, we're having space and future, I mean, this is a long-term build, and it's a, it's a pretty big facility. Um, and we've got nowhere to drain it to, right? We really struggle to get, uh, because it's gotta be connected to sewer. Um, so...
So this is like street sweeper?
Street sweeper, back on. We're gonna have, you know, the idea is you, you dump, you let it dry, you let, you know, before you have to haul it somewhere, right? So that's what these de-camp facilities do. They kind of give you an area of de-water and store some things. And same with some of our storage bins we've got. I think, well, because Kendall's gotten his crew off of the Mountain View site. We, we have an old master plan, but it needs to be redone, but, I mean, there's, there's some real opportunities up there, and so, yeah, I'm, I'm, I've moved away from, you know, the idea of maintaining that Center Street site. I'd like to get the de-camp facility built, because we don't have a place other than Center Street, right? So between Mountain View and Henrisie that we just bought, right? We, we believe that we've got, you know, storage, a de-camp location. You know, and I think when we think about Center Street, you know, so we've got, you know, what we, lower yard, where the, the main buildings are, but then we have the two parking lots that are across the street, right? Do we want to think of those as one whole kind of development option, you know, or is, you know, the two across the street, you know, do we think of those as just returning those back to like a residential type use? You know, how do we, you know, I'd love to hear the conversation about, about that.
Let me piggyback something on something you said. The parking lots at Center Street give us great opportunity. We own it, it's, we can rezone it to residential. We could have some affordable housing built on it that is permanently affordable. And we could select someone to build it, you know, Proud Ground or whoever else is out there. It, it affords us an opportunity. It also renits that part of the neighborhood back together, those parking lots. And then, you know, obviously, I've talked about it with you a lot, Commissioner Smith, about how we redeveloped the lower yard area into, again, some housing that could be, again, we control the narrative. So, you know, I've said many times, we don't control the cost of production and we don't control the land, but we have an opportunity to control some land, and we can say what goes there and how it's built, so that we could accommodate affordable housing that could be, you know? My goal is to, to, to really promote more ownership, and we could do that, because we own the land. We could put conditions on it to say, this is what it's gonna be, blah, 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 and, you know, work together in a partnership to make something really good happen, and bring that residential component back to that part of the neighborhood that hasn't had it there for years. If you look at the old sand worn maps, those were all houses there. There was, you know, no industrial use there or public workshops or whatever, it was all homes.
Um, along the same line, I don't, I'm, would like to see, um, the neighborhood come back in those pieces where it's, makes sense too, but along the same line, um, I am reluctant to, uh, abandon or, 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 you know, sell back that entire site or, um, until we find out exactly what we're going to do with Waterboard Park and the plans for Waterboard Park, because, um, if we give up that property and eliminate all connection from the lower yard to the upper yard, from the McGlaughlin, from that neighborhood to the park, I think that's a huge mistake. Um, the, the fact that we have enough property to almost connect, uh, the promenade to the lower site, uh, lower yard, um, with those parking lots and, and the high street houses and various things, want to remember a connection, you know, think about the future connection of the parks along, uh, the bluff to Waterboard Park and up above. Um, even if that just means one of those lots stays as a parking lot for Waterboard Park, and there's a connection of a trail that connects from the lower site to the upper site, I think we need to think about that before we just, you know, do away with the lots. How can we put some housing back in there, but also make that connection from the lower part to a future park up above?
Well, if we could create a parking lot adjacent to the bluff, where it could go up.
However that works, but I, I think we need...
But not John's elevator, though.
I think we need to think about how all that works together, um, when we're, when we start, you know, creating a plan for the upper park.
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't negating that at all. I, I think we need to have a connection.
Because I think they can do a little bit of both. Build some, put some housing back in there, build that neighborhood back up, and connect the park to the, the neighborhood as well.
That sounds like, could be a nice land development package that incorporates what you want, what you want.
Well, I want access to the park too from the lower.
Yeah.
Right now, you know, you can do it, but it's a...
Well, I didn't say you didn't want that.
Yeah.
Well, because right now, putting a sidewalk up that side streets and those weird streets, there's no way you're gonna do that.
It's not easily accessible either, so...
You know, so there's gotta be a way to make a connection there before we get rid of that.
Yeah, we wouldn't do that. That would be part of the plan.
Years ago, when we, when we had a master plan for that site, and we're in for a detailed development plan, the only way to traverse that bluff, because it's about seventy-five feet, was either an elevator or a very promiscuous kind of stair that went up the bluff. You know, I really would suggest you look at connecting to that, that upper yard, lower Waterboard Park, through the neighborhood, through the Waterboard Park Road. I think there's a really nice story with the Cameron Building. I, I know most people here have been in it probably, and it's in rough shape, that's two roughs, right? Twice as rough.
Yeah.
Um, but you could imagine, uh, you know, affordable housing, workforce housing, with a community center, community room, and that Cameron Building fits right in that, right? That starts getting you, you know, a two-over-one, a three-over-one build, which starts getting you closer to a connection maybe through the building onto that, you know, onto that bluff. Right? So rather than building an elevator, maybe you build a building tall enough that the residents can then make a connection through a vertical walkway, right?
Yeah. I think we only have one real elevator in town. You know, we don't want to compete with another elevator, but yeah.
We just hide it in the building.
Yeah, we'd hide it, yeah. Well, yeah, the cam, the, the, you, you all know what he's talking about when he talks about the Cameron Building, right? Yes?
It's the older, yeah, shot.
Yeah, the barrel vaulted building, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that building's darn scary.
It's rough. Been in it, I've been up the bluff a whole few times, and glad we've made it out of there each time.
Yes.
But I, I think there is something there. I mean, when you think about the historic of the neighborhood, the historic district, that building, I really think it presents an opportunity to create a community space and bring in that housing. Um, when we had the detailed development plan and we're looking at what we were doing in those buildings, they were vehicle storage buildings.
Yeah.
And, you know, that facade on Center Street is an art deco concrete facade that has, in my mind, some historic fabric, some historic relevance. You take the Cameron Building and that facade and do a new development, I think you have a really nice story there.
Yeah, go ahead. So I agree. I would like to see residential there. I, it's important to me that a, a good chunk of this property, while still maintaining the wholeness of Waterboard Park, or restoring...
Restoring.
Um, the wholeness of Waterboard Park, uh, is getting the property back on the tax rolls. I think now that we've got an additional site at First Street, where that is now a public area, I would like to partially be able to offset that by getting it back onto the tax rolls. I agree that it, it should be residential. Um, I don't necessarily agree that it ought to be deed restricted, affordable housing. We have a huge development that's going in right now, uh, through Metro, and I think that one area that gets, uh, grossly under, given less attention is the workforce housing that you just mentioned. So it's not the deed restricted, it's not the McMansions, but it's the in-between for the nurses and the teachers who don't really fall in either of the higher or the lower end categories, uh, that we are also missing out on. So not necessarily the public, government subsidized, uh, deed restricted, which is something that we need, unfortunately, that we are getting a good amount of. Uh, but I think that, given the Metro project going on right now, uh, that we don't necessarily need to be looking specifically at affordable housing, uh, so much as a variety of housing types, uh, that we still need to be covering in the city.
So, excuse me, when I talk about affordable housing, I'm not talking about thirty-five percent of median failing income and below, I'm talking about eighty that workforce.
Okay.
That's the word I didn't use. I want to, again, we can, so, organizations like Habitat for Humanity or Proud Ground or Northwest Housing Alternatives, that is workforce housing up on, on, um, at Juneberry Court, but it has some requirements on it that it is gonna stay in ownership, and that's how people are able to get into it. So workforce housing is still maybe gonna need a little bit of assistance, and so if there's some way we can, let's say, manipulate the market so people who, like the people you were talking about, the janitors, the nurses, the teachers, can get in there, that's...
Right, and what I'm saying is that there's a difference between...
Yeah, no, I'm, yeah, and I'm not talking about the stuff that, that Metro's...
...component, which I think is important to delineate.
Yeah.
Um, because our community also needs those...
We need workforce housing more than we need the other, believe me.
I don't know.
We were talking, our median fam, our median house price in Oregon City now is five hundred and forty-eight K. And that's, you know, that's probably three full-time employees, people in a household working to, to make that happen, and that, you know, that's, that's, that's untenable. We, you know, we can't do that.
So if the first step in vacating Center Street is to allow you to construct this facility that you need, you're gonna do that at the Mountain View facility? Which is currently only used mainly for storage, correct?
Right.
Do you have a cost estimate on that?
No.
Anybody? Nobody? We could produce one. Yeah, we can do one. Well, it's a first step in vacating the facility, I think that'd be a good piece of information to start with.
Do we own the Henrisie property?
Yeah.
Yes.
We closed, we closed it.
So there wouldn't be anything to keep you from moving whatever you need to move from Mountain View out of the way there, so that you could build a de-camp facility?
Yeah, I mean, yes.
What's the zone and...
Whether it's there or First Street or, you know, we've got some, we've got some way to shell some things, yeah.
So you're gonna bring it out of the way so that you could build the de-camp?
We still have some work to do on Henrisie, in terms of land use.
Yeah, it's not just a slip...
Like a, a building to store stuff in. So, we've got the land, you know, we're moving through that process, but it's, it's not like it's move-in ready quite yet. But we have other areas that I think we could phase stuff.
Center County jurisdiction too, it's not the same zone that we have.
Yeah, right.
So right now, the way that we're dealing with that particular one is, in the twenty-year plan, we are doing master plans for both Henrisie and Mountain View Reservoir at the same time, so that we could delineate which one, which, which of the things will go to one place versus the other, and have, um, master plans for both of those facilities done in conjunction with each other. And that would give you basically the overall square footage that you would need, um, so that we could do full pricing for it.
I hate to break this, but I need a break. That's why I was asking how much more you had to go.
Sorry. Think of a five-minute break, but I would, I will say that we feel confident that Mountain View Reservoir can handle the de-camp and some. I mean, when you talk about its location, it's centralized, you know, bringing, uh, people to the machine and efficiency between, you know, travel times, it is the ideal location for that facility, giving you time to figure out Henrisie down the line. It's a long drive out to Henrisie, so you really want to get through what's out there.
On crappy roads.
So do we need a consensus from three-year mortgage to pursue this, uh, cost estimate on this de-camp? Because that's the first step toward vacating that building. So do we need that? Do you need that from a consensus?
Let's just get a rough estimate of what that would be.
We can, we can, the county, the county just built a de-camp facility at the one on Beaver Creek.
Whoa. Yeah, we just completed one for the state of Wilsonville. Um, we've got detailed plans for what John would like, so yeah, we can, we can help get you some high-level numbers.
Well, I think that's a good first step. And we've been targeting vacating that for a long discussion, so let's get moving.
Copy that.
John, what do you want?
We're gonna take them.
Yes.
Eight o'clock, five?
Yeah, it's four six. We're taking a break.
Till eight o'clock.
Yep. Pardon? Yeah, well, no, we're talk- I, what he's saying is, should we separate them into two? There's the west side and the east side. See, I agree with you, the west side is a slam dunk. You recreate the lots, you know, we can build, you can build attached single-family on them and get a little bit more for workforce and make it, you know, make it work.
Back in the neighborhood.
And, and again, it just, it connects, 'cause there, like I said, there were houses on there originally. They were all fifty kind of by one hundred lots, so you have a block that's split for, you know, but we get a few more things on there, plus still have a little bit of green space and parking strips and nice sidewalk and, and all that, but it's...
Is it three lots or two lots?
Three lots.
It's, yes, they're...
It may even be four, depending on a lot line at the Cameron Building. I don't remember off the top of my head, but...
Tony's pulling that up on...
Well, if nothing else, we could start to rezone because it's very institutional.
Right. The whole thing's gonna need...
Get that process started.
Rezone.
You start saying three over one, two over one, are you talking mixed-use commercial, are you talking vertical tax credit stuff? I was just curious, are we interested in putting storefronts on the First Ward down there? I don't, I didn't see it. I just see it as residential only.
It's residential.
Yep.
Is the adjacent zoning, um, R six is what I'm recalling in that particular area?
I'm pretty sure R five.
I think the R five is over closer to where I am. R three point five. It's like looking, well, he's looking it up. Clock is ticking. Are you on the zoning thing?
Maybe we can move on to the next...
Okay, well, yellow is, uh...
All right, let's move on to the next facility. Well, we can circle back on that.
Speed density.
The next two facilities are actually long-term decision plans, so those are in the fifteen to twenty years down the line. Um, it is the Seventh Street Fire Station and your current City Hall. So, right now, for Seventh Street Fire Station, Fire Department, um, resides within that building. There is long-term plan for them to basically, um, vacate at some point. Timeline unknown, um, but we wanted to go ahead and address that within the twenty-year master plan of what do you do with that building once they vacate?
The station across from the library. That's correct.
Yes, our, our, I call it our main station, they call it Station Fifteen.
Why is it not serviced at all?
I, well, I'm, I'm...
We're talking fifteen years out.
I'm gonna put on my residential hat is that, as I said before, I appreciate the fact that there is a fire station with fairly instantaneous access. We've had some number of fires in the neighborhood, I mean, whole houses not designated ones going up, and they prevented something from happening. I know, you know, I, I've talked to Chief Brown, you know, I said, they're talking about downsizing some of their apparatus. I mean, they don't need the biggest, giantest thing there. And I, I just think that, I have, I have really mixed feelings about that being abandoned in some way.
So do I. And they just loaded a bond where their typical goal was to buy smaller equipment.
Right. And they wanted to fully staff the thing, and they've got a new sign-up now, which I have a question about with the legality of that thing sitting there. Um, it's a banner saying, "This station is fully staffed because of the bond measure."
I don't, no comment. I think, I just, I just no comment on that.
Yeah, well, the bond is still a source subject with some of the members of our community. But, yeah, I, I don't, I, I don't really understand what the conversation is because I'm not a party to it about why they would want to leave that station.
See, I feel that, that particular building, and as you said, do we really, are we really gonna need another City Hall, the way we're doing things? We may, we may not.
These are, these are way down the road things.
Yep. So is maybe this a, you know, follow-up conversation with Clackamas County Fire District, kind of get an understanding of their needs?
Their timeline.
What they're thinking, you know, I mean, when we think about this, you know, it's like, does this become a support for, City Hall doesn't become support for the library, right? Does it become a community?
Community.
Asset right there, a community center, you know, firemen's group, right? I, you know, who knows?
Does it stay as a fire station?
Does it stay as a fire sta- right. I, I think that'd be, I think that'd be why it's important to have Clackamas County Fire District come and talk about...
I agree.
Some of the challenges that they have with that, with that location, um, right, wrong, or indifferent, right? At least then you could hear from them, kind of what they're thinking longer term. So maybe that's the plan rather than...
There's nothing that's close. That's what bothers me.
I really wanted a group hub and a slide-down-the-pole thing, but okay.
They don't let you do that.
Broad West Club.
Nope.
Well, you, I mean...
My fire insurance rates are lower because that station is there. And the one up at sixteen, that is not close enough.
Yeah. Someday you'll be happy. But I think what they're looking at is something in that area, right? But once again, I think we should invite them to have that discussion.
That's fair. I mean, but the question is why? I mean, can you service multi-story buildings with the equipment you have there? And the answer is yes, why else do you need to do?
We don't have any multi-story buildings.
Sure you do. Some of your, some of your homes are...
Well, they're two-story, but there's nothing taller than the I double O F hall in that neighborhood.
Isn't there, aren't they, don't they have a third story, like an attic?
Some of, yeah.
I think they do.
Some of them might.
They're really tall. As long as you can reach those, you guys have everything you need.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I'm, I'm having heart palpitations of the conversations that we had when Toowallton Valley Fire was in there, and of course, they want, for lack of a better term, and not to denigrate the Taj Mahal, but they wanted a Taj Mahal, and they built a butt-ugly station, if I may say this on the record, in West Lynn. It's so awful. It's so out of scale with that neighborhood. It's horrible. I don't, you know, we don't want that. They wanted to tear the building down, and the neighborhood found out about it, and it was not good.
We should hear from them.
Yes, we should.
That's a reasonable...
Yes.
And in this next step to, to then have that further discussion. They're on an eight-year bond cycle, so they just renewed that. So you have some time. Be nice to know how long their lease is, and then, yeah, hear from them. You can see a lot of different options with that building if the Fire District decided to vacate. Now, you can see, it's a little cultural hub, that's the main cultural corridor, so what can that, what can that provide? But that's down the line.
I'm just gonna put the flyer out at my house, Brad, which is not gonna be one, but I'm thinking about my neighbors.
Okay, next.
So, City Hall, um, City Hall right now is your empty chair for the kind of short term. That's who, we're, as we do all of these moves and move everybody, that is really where, um, kind of the empty chair is, to put people temporarily before we move them into their correct location and everything. So, City Hall will be utilized for a good long time. There again, this is a long-term plan, so in the fifteen to twenty-year plan, if all of the, everything else is kind of constructed, City Hall, a lot of those, um, those uses that are currently there are no longer gonna be, um, basically utilized within that building. So what would you wanna do with that building in fifteen to twenty years?
The uses that are in it are no longer gonna be utilized?
They wouldn't be there, right?
They wouldn't be there. So if you, if you build a new City Hall, i.e. next door, move everybody out of that building... move everybody out of that building and into your new city hall, then that old city hall building will no longer be used for city hall. So, what would you want that to be utilized for in fifteen to twenty years?
You know, it could go back to a medical office, which is what it was.
Yeah, we ultimately see it's a vacant building, it'll serve its need in the short term, as a place like Murgat is saying, for a different stack to plug in as needed, as you know, you know, we cleared out engineering, so you've got a lot of vacancy there, it's got a council chamber with a little bit of work via meeting room. In the long term, we actually see that you don't need it, and it could be something that is given back.
You can have that discussion during Mayor's fifth term in office.
It could be, it could be the annex for the Oregon City Library.
There you go.
Once again, just a language change, on the, on the fire station in City Hall, I would say it's supposed to say, if the Fire Department vacates and if a new city hall is constructed.
Yes, perfect.
Does this make it sound like we're planning plans?
Yeah, yeah.
And we're not there yet?
Yep.
Perfect sauce.
Who is the lease or, are we the lease, do we?
We own it.
We own it.
We own it.
What's the term of the lease, long-term? Is it a five-year lease, eight-year lease, three-year lease?
For which?
Building.
City Hall?
No, the, the fire station.
The fire station's a long-term lease. Um, I'd have to pull it up, it's very long-term.
With a heavy penalty clause.
Yes, if you vacate.
Fix the roof for us.
You will die. Well, maybe we need, you know, aren't we supposed to be in partnership on that? On the, on the facilities maintenance?
So both, City Hall, Seventh Street Fire Station, long-term decisions to come down the line. The last one today, this is hopefully where we can conclude and get you all out of here, is the last sect.
One of Vista.
Are you waiting for my head to explode?
Or mine?
Or not?
Purposely saved this one for last, we felt this one would go around the room a little bit.
I would have put it first, advising you.
We wanted to get to the other ones, we put this one last.
Yeah, thank you.
Give it its time and its due, so, longer going all the way.
So, there's quite a bit that we could do with the building, we could basically do a full kind of renovation of the building, we would need to do things like seismic structural upgrades, AD upgrades, building enclosure upgrades, electrical, that type of stuff, to be able to make that kind of a utilization asset for you.
And remove the giant tree that's sitting at the corner.
Yes.
That's got to go.
Yes.
There's a big tree there that is.
I've been there, I just thought you were just trying to antagonize the tree people.
No, I've had a long discussion with the tree people about that tree.
The tree.
And as much as I love trees, that, that, it's, it was a seedling and it's just gone crazy.
You're lucky to fit in this opening.
Oh, yeah, it's huge.
Going to need a parade.
It's huge, but the old pictures don't really show it being there, and then boom, it's there, so.
Boy, I'd really love to have that tree rather than that house.
I think that tree would look wonderful next to a monument where this house used to stand.
I think it's the Frank O'Donnell recreational center is what's going to happen there. I will personally make the plaque.
So, we could also.
This almost cost our friendship many years ago.
Really? It still could.
Well, it's okay with me, I'll, I'll stand for what I believe.
In his, in his heart of hearts, he really wants me to be happy, you know, deep down.
In West Lynn.
No, I don't want to move it to West Lynn. Okay, let's, let's be serious, come on, let's be serious.
Are there thoughts on, I mean, I think, I don't, I don't, we've got, we tried to lay out the pros and cons from the previous conversations that, that we've kind of had around this, this facility, but really, this is a policy discussion, decision for the Commission to kind of work through.
On the pros and cons?
Sure.
I don't understand one of the cons on the, um, keep the building side. Building is not in a prominent location relative to the park, it's in the front entrance of the park, how could it not be more prominent?
It's pretty prominent.
I don't understand where that wording came from or who thought of it, because it makes no sense at all.
So you're suggesting it be changed?
Is the park prominent in the city? No, it's not, but the building is, couldn't possibly be more prominent unless it was sitting in the center of the street. So, don't understand that. I also don't understand why one option is remove the building when this Commission's already decided not to remove it, they haven't decided to tear it down, but let it sit there, so.
I don't know whether with this Commission, it decided, because it's changed over the time, but.
Well, we, it would, it would be gone already if we had decided to remove it. That has come to the Commission at least twice in the last ten years.
Under a previous administration.
At both times, it has been slated to stay.
Did that come up under your tenure?
I don't recall.
Did it come up under your tenure?
It's before your time, it was under our previous, previous mayor.
Okay.
Well, I don't think that being on the National Register is a con, so I would really like to see that changed. I think the National Register is an opportunity, as opposed to a detriment, and this is a similar situation.
It's a con to removing it. Yeah. If you remove it, you're.
Well, I'm, I'm not, I'm not operating under the assumption it's going to be removed. That's just me, personally and professionally, so.
So.
The park does not have a lot of amenities, it has a shelter, which is probably, and some benches that are probably on their last legs, because I've had a number of meetings during the summer there, and it's, I can tell you can get a lot of splinters on, on those, on those benches. The park has served, the building has served as a bathroom, and again, under a previous administration, the building was gutted, which it shouldn't have done, it didn't go through a public process, I don't want to relive all that because we've been there. I, I feel that as stewards of the properties that we own, there is money sitting in the bank, waiting right now to do a feasibility study, which is what the organization wanted to do and give it to the city, so the city didn't have to spend any money on it.
So, is that the decision? Is that the next step, is to do the feasibility study, understand what that building could be, what it could, what it could provide to the park?
To me, it's a logical next step, just like any other facility, what could it be used for? There's been lots of discussion, lots of, you know, in the community, I'm saying out in the community, about things that it could be used for. It's, it's had historic use until the building was gutted.
Yep.
It had electricity, it had bathroom, it had everything in it, and then unbeknownst.
And it was being used frequently.
And it was being used.
Frequently.
It's historically been used, so they, they've had, you know, like I said, you can just read the nomination of all the things that were in that building over time. Not everybody wants to use the senior center, there are things that could happen in the park that that building would be perfect for. I don't know if you've been in the bathrooms at Atkinson Park, but I personally didn't want to use them. I, I was like, oh, no, I, you know.
So, let me ask this, if, if we knew what it would cost to bring that up to a usable standard, would you be willing to put it out to an advisory vote of the people of Oregon City if they wanted to expend that money?
Not unless we did it with all the other things we're talking about, why single that one out? We have other things that are as valuable.
Yeah, it's for maintenance of the parks, I mean, we deliberately.
We did it our city, we did it to ourselves.
So that we could have to tear it down, that's what the Parks Department did. No different than other facilities that they've done, we've done the same thing too. It comes down to maintaining our facilities, period.
See, I questioned because of the size of the building and the condition of the building, and I, I grant you that it got that way through some other reasons, but I don't know if it merits fixing it up to justify it for use as a meeting building. I think I could build you a better meeting building cheaper than what it would cost to get that thing structurally approved and back up to snuff.
It's not, it's not structurally unsound, it needs a foundation, part of the foundation, it needs part of the, it needs the foundation to be redone, part of it needs to be redone, that's already been reviewed and analyzed, it's.
By whom?
By our, it's by the architect.
I want an objective, I've been, I've been in it, I've been under it.
I've been in it, I've been under it, I've been on top of it.
We have a difference of opinion, and I know it's, it's a testy point among friends, but I really question its value as other than a historical landmark, and I have no opposition to it as such, but to try to convert it to a meeting room.
It already was a meeting space, it was a yoga studio, it was a Cub Scout facility.
I understand all that, but.
So why are you saying converting it? It already was there.
Because it's not usable as one, okay? Resurrecting it is one, whatever the choice of words is. I mean, I think if you asked of the thirty-seven thousand people who lived in Oregon City, where is this place at? I don't know.
Right, because we've deliberately neglected it and never used it, so that we could get to the point where we could demolish it, that's definition, demolition by neglect.
We've had the same issue with the.
We've intentionally done that.
With the Irmittinger House.
Just like this, we were doing to the pool at one time, where we said, oh, we can't repair the starting blocks, because we didn't want to. So, it, it's, that building was viable, there were events in that park every year, festivals, this is stuff I remember, the ones of you that don't remember clearly have that opinion, because you don't know that park being used in the way that it always had been. So our Parks Department, they neglected it to the point that it is today. That, that park was utilized for events, that building was utilized, I remember going to that building multiple times a week for events.
Well, sadly, the group that wanted to salvage it has been unable to raise the funds and do anything with it, and I was all supportive of that.
We have, we have not been unable to raise the funds.
I don't think that's true, they just said they had money.
We have money in the bank.
Towards feasibility study, so how is that not raising money?
We have over three thousand dollars in the bank, which is what we were going to use for a feasibility study, we had the match. It required a match, we have it to do it.
I, I'm not going to argue with you.
It's not, it's not an argument, I'm just, I'm just trying to give you information, plus we have access to other, to additional funds. If we need it, we have, we have more than enough money, we have over five thousand dollars if we need to access it.
I can't believe I'm going to do this, but I guess I should throw myself off the cliff here, because I.
Of Atkinson Park?
I have never stated an opinion publicly on this. I'm not opposed to getting more information, because as I recall, one of the things that's been a concern for a long time were two wildly different cost estimates.
Yes.
On what it would take, and that leads me to not believe either one. I will say, and I'll use the exact words, I had a nice conversation with Mr. Maybe about this, a couple of months ago, and I'll tell you what I told him. To me today, that's a marginal building of marginal use in a marginal location, and it's going to take a lot to convince me of its use. And I, I understand that we have an obligation to protect our, our historic assets, and a serious mistake was made.
Agreed.
But when it comes to fixing that, we also, we have an obligation as a Commission to protect those historic assets, but we also have a bigger obligation in my mind to be careful stewards of the public money, and that's why it's going to be a pretty damn, pardon me, steep hill for me to climb, depending on, I don't know how much money we're talking The other thing I'll say is, of the three options, fix it, tear it down, let it sit there and rot, let it sit there and rot is not acceptable to me, so there'd be a certain amount of money that we would have to spend to tear it down and restore that, I could see that amount of money being seed money to, whether it's the Parks Foundation or Friends Group or whatever, to fundraise off of, but I'm going to be a tough sell.
Well, I will defer to, to Commissioner Smith, because this is the same conversation that had been had over twenty years ago about the Irmittinger House. I sat in, not in this room, but in other rooms, when the same conversation came up, and again, we were being bad stewards of that, I'm not trying to guilt anybody into this, but we got into this situation because you were on the end of the four-one vote, I can tell you that, because I went back and checked it. Something happened in a previous administration that somebody made a dictatorial statement and said, oh, we're going to gut that building and tear it down, that is exactly what happened.
I, I.
A few people, that's, again.
In no way do I equate the Irmittinger House with this clubhouse.
They're both on the National Register.
So, pardon me, doesn't matter.
Well, it.
One, one is a community asset, a tourism attraction, and has a unique history to it.
Yes.
The other is, like I said, marginal building, marginal location, marginal use.
Has a unique history, could be something more than it is if we hadn't done what we did to it.
Okay.
Right, and prior to the Irmittinger House being restored.
It was kind of a dunk.
And a Friends Group being involved, the city was doing absolutely nothing with it. So, now, it's successful, because it has a Friends Group that is constantly in support with staff to run programs out of it. Historically wise, you're right, it's not the same, but to me, it's flat-out the neglect of that building, which was always, you know, we have, like I've said already, multiple times, we made the choices, well, I'll say we, we didn't make that choice, staff made that choice to neglect that building and destroy that building. It has been used in the past, and I would equate this to the same thing that we've done so many times in this city, where we have, we have a potential use of something that we intentionally ignore. The Trolley was a great example of that. We could have made that a viable thing, we could have sold advertising, we could have done so many things, and yet, the city never wanted, so they neglected it till they killed it. We're responsible for that, so I, I, you know, I, if we want to be stewards of the money, well, we weren't with this building, tearing it down is going to cost us a hundred thousand dollars, I'd rather see a hundred thousand dollars going towards doing something with the building rather than tear it down for grass.
And that's, and that's why I suggested that might be an alternative.
Right, I mean, I.
It was seventy-some mil, seventy-five thousand dollars ten years ago.
I just want the opportunity for, for the community and the Friends Group to try to do more fundraising. They, they have been reluctant to do it because we had this plan, so I told, I said, hold off, we need to see this plan, I know that there was some bias built into not faulting you guys, but again, I just don't understand why we wouldn't, to me, this is the courthouse on a smaller scale. The courthouse is not on that.
Sorry.
Okay, just, just bear, just bear with me, I'm not trying to change your mind, I'm just saying, we deserve the opportunity to try to bring it back into service. If it doesn't work, then that's a completely different story, but to not even try, I said, I am, I'm carrying a lot of angst about the building, because what happened under a previous Parks administration, I'm, I know we can't go back and fix that, but in order for it to be fixed, we have to correct the problem, and we did it to ourselves, I mean, I'm not trying to, you know, to blame us, we didn't do it, but we're still part of that city, and if we go doing something without giving it at least a, a, a shot to try to come back, then we're doing ourselves a disservice, because we could, we'll spend our time going, well, we should have, could have, well, what if we tried this, we didn't, we haven't been able to try anything.
Which is, which is why when I started, I said.
I know.
I would like to get more information.
I agree, and I think we do need to get more information, I'm using the courthouse as an example, it's the same type of situation where we have a reluctant property owner who will not allow for this to be moved forward. That's what I'm saying.
I want to be careful too of negating that park, because I've heard every, a lot of people negate that park in the conversation, say, oh, well, it's not in a prominent location, it's not, I mean, someone on this, I think you asked, well, oh, there's no master plan for Atkinson Park, well, there clearly wasn't a master plan for Atkinson Park at one time. The, the, we're, we're using an argument to negate a building by negating the park. Don't do that, that's their park, that's that neighborhood's park, that's that neighborhood's only access, that's their, their, that park has just as much value as the park across the street from me that we just spent hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars on.
Agreed.
Now, separate from the building, we can't use the, you know, the poor, the poor condition of the park to say, oh, well, then we can, just because the park is poor and no one goes up there, which is bullshit. We're going to also then say, well, we can just tear the building down. Because that's the argument I keep hearing. If we want to separate that, that's fine. But that park has every right to be fully maintained. And we neglected the park so the building could be neglected so no one would use it for events, so we can just tear it. We did that.
The park came down because of the building?
That's not okay with me. It's not acceptable. We owe that neighborhood back, that park. And whether we keep the building or not, we can get into that argument. But we're also at the same time negating a park just as much everyone that has commented on the building is expected to refer to the park as almost a non-existent park. It's somebody's park and it's the Buena Vista neighborhood park, which is completely non-existent as soon as we tear that building down. Buena Vista will be gone, just like Mount Pleasant's gone.
I don't think anybody's negating that park.
Everyone is negating it every time you've made a comment about it.
Well, I'm not negating it. I think it's a beautiful park. It's hilly. It's gorgeous. It's got trees. It's a wonderful park.
It could be more.
I don't, I don't... One is independent of the other for me. And again, I can't equate that building with, whether it be the firehouse or any other, Ermitainger or any other. They just do not carry the same historic weight.
Do you know the history?
Yeah, it's been drilled into me by everybody that's ever come before us.
Do you really know it?
Well, do you want to extend the lesson tonight?
Well, we can get you a copy of the nomination and all the...
I know how the nomination happened. You were instrumental in that.
Well, because I cared about it.
Yeah, I know.
The research done on that building showed so much more, and that is one of the reasons why it was eligible.
Remember this, you've got a new commission here that's trying to work with you and arrive at a satisfactory solution. You also have the possibility of three members of this commission saying, take it down. Now, nobody's saying that, but it could happen. So let's see if they try to work together or not work together.
Let's get more information.
Well, I think that's what Commissioner Mitchell was proposing.
It's what I've been proposing since the get-go. We need more information.
There's a difference between the original conversations with widely disparaging comments on what it would cost to make that serviceable. And then the question is, what do you want? Do you want to restore it to its historical basis and not use it for a meeting room? I mean, I think the city's paying the electric bill to keep heat in at the moment.
Its historic significance was a meeting room. That's its historic significance. It's what it always was.
The question is, are you trying to make it a historical building? Are you trying to make it a serviceable?
Yes.
State-of-the-art meeting room as are others in the city now? Do you need that?
The exterior of the building is one thing. The interior can be brought back so it's serviceable.
Well, I'm sorry. I've built buildings and I've been under it and I've been in it and I've been around it. And I've got my own opinion of it. It differs from yours. So we'll just leave it at that. I mean, it has no foundation. It's a partial foundation, supported by timbers underneath. There's so many things that would take, get the estimate, I don't care. But I feel that my first obligation is how I spend money, be responsible to the populace of Oregon City as a whole. So do what you will.
I'm not sure how spending $70,000 to $100,000 to tear a building down rather than put that into the building is valuable.
Well, the flip side of that question is depending on whose estimate you want to live with from years before, was it $400,000 or close to a million? There's people throwing numbers around with nobody that could verify those numbers other than people who have a vested interest in an outcome.
Thank you. So this feasibility study would be entirely funded with the match that has been privately organized. Would there be any city contribution to that feasibility study?
No.
Okay. So I am supportive of moving forward on that understanding that if it does, if the feasibility study comes back and we decide we want to rebuild it, that that is the time where, when we would be incurring the costs. So I don't want us to be saying moving ahead will cost us nothing because then moving ahead will lead us to the points where it will possibly cost us the money to refurbish, remodel, restore, or whatever. That being said, I would be supportive of looking, or I would be supportive of moving forward with the feasibility study so we can at least have an idea as to what can be put there. I mean, having gone through all of these public buildings just now, all these public properties that we have, and thinking of all the possibilities that we can already do with them, it is a negative for me in the step of wanting to make another one in the form of restoring the Buena Vista Clubhouse. However, if we are able to make it somehow be profitable to us, if we were to lease it to someone who wants to do, I don't know, art or something with the arts or music there, if we are able to do something that makes it profitable for us, as other parks ventures are, after going through this feasibility study where we would not be committing a dime to anything in the future, just seeing what it is, then I would be all right with doing that.
Well, it was making money when it was being rented out.
Was it?
It wasn't, it was not, it was, it was basically holding its own. Like I said...
Which is more than we can say for the end of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center.
The history of the building and the history of the park are intertwined. Because the building was moved there because of Atkinson Park and its significance in our community, and it's tied to Atkinson Park, which is why the two things were together. And, you know, it is, again, one of the last buildings that is still existing from the Buena Vista neighborhood. The Buena Vista store got torn down to build a multiple-family unit.
I think it's important that every statement that's made be supported, not an opinion. It parks has statements as well. In 1968 or 1992, it was in operation and it cost us this much to run it and it made this much money. That'd be fine by me. The other thing is whoever assesses this building, whoever goes in and conducts this evaluation, they need to be objective. I don't want somebody selected by, it almost needs to be an objective person, not somebody that favors your group or favors the city. I don't know how we arrive with that person. And we can move forward based on that input. I'd be fine with that.
Yeah, so moving forward with the feasibility study that is not publicly financed with the understanding that it does not commit us to anything in the future, but shows us a menu of options, of which for me, a profitable option would be my go-to. I would support going down that path to see what we can do with the building.
Consensus there?
Yes, got it all. And I was going to add, taking the prior cost estimates, kind of understanding what they were developed on, who did them, it wouldn't take a lot, a lot for, you know, an unbiased group estimator or design group to look at that and figure that out, right? If our group even was given the documentation and the drawings, it's not a big lift to validate the cost estimates.
My preference would be an onsite inspection.
That would be required.
Yeah, I don't want a secondary opinion based on the documents provided. I believe this, I went and I saw it, and this is the condition of the building.
I would be curious to, I mean, this is just my curiosity, the differences in between the two estimates. I'm hearing, you know, substantially low value and a really high value. So that would be the first step to kind of understand that and then, yeah, look at the building, you know? Bring out a structural engineer, have them crawl.
Do you remember the number? I thought, I thought one number was $400,000, one number was approaching a million. And that's from many years back.
Yeah, I'm not recalling that.
I remember the demo cost, but...
You say the demo was set?
The original work was done to talk about how it was torn down was done under Scott Archer's administration. Phil Lewis was able to find documentation on the fact that it had been leased and used and here's what, here's how, you know, here's the money.
Yeah.
That's, that's the last information that I had, and that was under Mr. Lewis's administration.
We had a number put together, and then I think it was Mr. Eisen put together a number.
He did.
And it was, but it was similar to what you were just referencing, the gap, the difference.
I recall the gap being huge.
Yeah, well, again, like you said, we don't want to rely on our feeble memories, so we'll find it.
Put a concept study together on the building, you know? Knowing that you want it to be serviceable and more of a meeting space community center.
No, I don't know if community center is really the right word. It was community use.
Community use, excuse me, yeah. Something that is a community use, which with the size of that building, that's, you know, one space and maybe a restroom or a kitchenette, it's easy to get to that at a concept level and then give you...
It had a restroom and a kitchenette.
Yeah, so, I mean, at that, it'd be easy to give you a high-level cost estimate on a, on a concept plan.
If that building's 600 square feet, it's a lot.
Well, we have it, we have that information in the nomination.
Yeah, we don't need to argue over the square footage.
No, I'm not arguing.
You got a plan. We know who's financing it. Mr. Amaro laid out the criteria. Let's move on.
Noted. Yep, that's easy.
So that concludes our questions and kind of direction that we needed with Master Plan. Master Plan in itself, we have kind of written out each individual building, short-term, mid-term, and long-term plan. I have a feeling we don't want to go through all of that at this point. So maybe we'll review that. And then, Tony, is there any other things you want to cover today?
I guess just, you know, based on this, this conversation, you know, is there anything we've missed that you want to talk about? You know, otherwise, we'll be taking these comments back, incorporating them, and probably, you know, at that point, bringing it back for more of a, you know, more of like a adoption by resolution type of discussion. So this isn't the end of this. But I think, I feel like we're getting closer to getting through the bigger questions that we had and now documenting that so that we can adopt this and then decide what the next steps are going to be.
I think there's a lot of information to be gathered. You know, you talked about the end of the Oregon Trail. Is it an ongoing financial institution? You know, all these things we talk about, about replace versus rebuild. I mean, those are, those have to be supported by numbers. So there's a lot of information gathering to do. As far as the pool is, what do you want to offer to the community? What is it you're trying to do? That's where that starts.
And those will be kind of next-step standalone projects?
Yeah.
Okay, just so we're all on the same page there. Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments for us?
No, because if I say anything else, it'll be beating a dead horse to death about how the city has continually, as you stated, neglected its overall assets. So I'm going to leave it at that.
That's where it belongs to the mayor.
Let's move on to the next slide.
Thank you very much.
So update on city projects. Thank you.
Thanks for saving the best for last. If anybody was falling asleep, they're not. There's always a method to the best.
So for the Quiet Zone, after the last update, we were working with ODOT on the scope of work and procurement process. So since then, the ODOT has released a consultant solicitation request for proposals, and a date has been set to review the proposals once they've been submitted. So we've been through that procurement process for the Quiet Zone, Charter Parks, working with Bill, drafting easement language, similar to our rights-of-way obstruction easement that we utilize, that we'll be bringing back for review. Once again, we're going to kind of try and tailor those based on the type of encroachment that is associated with it as well as protections for the city. Should we ever need to remove those easements or do work in that area?
Have we followed up with the property that we looked at that was about ready to put down, the cement blocks to create a driveway, which was in the park?
Uh, no, I don't believe that we have.
Again, I just don't want that person to be putting that stuff down there and then find out they can't do it.
For Caius Five Memorial, we did send out the bid package. Unfortunately, we did not get any contractors bidding on it, so...
Seriously?
Yes.
Geez.
So we're reaching out to individual contractors to understand what the concern was with it as well as to kind of explain the project a little bit more to see if we can get someone interested. I believe we're making some pretty good progress on that. So hopefully, we'll be able to get to in a position where we can have a viable contractor for that project.
Have you given that feedback to the involved tribe to see if they have any suggestions on anyone who might be interested in doing it?
I don't think we've not, we've informed them of what has happened. I guess we haven't had that conversation if they specifically...
Maybe there's someone who has a vested interest or a historic interest in...
Has experience.
Wants to contribute in that, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and one of the firms we're looking at did a lot of the work related to the repair on McGlaughlin Promenade years ago when we did the tuck pointing of all the rock and the caps. Yes. And then courthouse, there's been no movement. The mayor and I are meeting with the county administrator next week to talk about the courthouse and the other buildings in downtown associated with the relocation.
And the park.
Tamwata Village, actually, had a great conversation with their chief of staff last Friday. We're going to be reaching out, trying to find a date for a work session to come before the city commission, for them to talk about kind of some of their ideas for the property and what they're looking at in terms of the master plan.
And that was with Ms. Hernandez?
Correct.
Okay.
And then no movement on the rights-of-way.
I got the notice for their neighborhood meeting, and I thought there was something, it didn't say right-of-way, but it talked, there was something on there. Is that a meeting you're supposed to be attending? John? The Kinnema neighborhood meeting? There was something on their agenda about rights-of-way, which made me a little anxious when I saw it. I just, I know the history, so as you do. Just why it made me pause. I just don't want us to go there and get blindsided.
All right, those are the updates that I have.
I guess I'm up, huh?
Uh, yes, but before we get to that, I wanted to ask, is, am I the only one that's going to be going to the League of Oregon Cities meeting at the end of April?
I've been playing balls.
Yes. I know you've got workload issues. I know you're not going, you're not going.
Is there still time to respond?
Yes.
Let me speak with, let me see if I'm going or not.
Yeah, and ask Shauna. I did see a notice come through that said that the rooms in the, at Wondering Wire are already filled up, which is why I told Shauna to make me a reservation before she registered me for the event because I knew that was going to happen. I mean, there's stuff nearby, but it's on the site, but it's just in the...
I just rent an RV and parked it.
There you go. Yeah, they got space for that. Okay. All right. Just wanted to, I just know that that's something that's on her.
Okay.
But talk to her on about that, so. So you are up.
So on the South Fork Water Board, the only thing I would say about that is I'm going to go up there and meet with Mayor Villasowski.
Yes.
And do a walkthrough on maintenance issues. We talked about our budget and meeting, not only dealing with structural concerns and also legal concerns. And we're going to schedule a walkthrough with Mr. Parno and take a look at the facility. I don't know if anyone else wants to join us or not.
When are you doing that?
It's not scheduled yet. He hasn't sent me a date.
Yeah, I have, I mean, I haven't been there for, walked the whole site for probably 10 years.
Well, you know, we had some specific concerns that had to do with meeting state standards and...
Exactly.
Also structural concerns that we want to take a look at.
At our last meeting that you were not able to attend, we did talk about some priority work plan items. And in the list that I submitted, I put, specifically put, the evaluation that you had asked for, that we've been asking for, and also an assessment. As we were leaving the building, I asked the question, I said, okay, what are the essential services that are in this building? That, should we have a seismic episode? I said, this building's going to fall down. So what do you have in here that needs to be protected? And the answer I got back was...
Everything.
Well, not everything, but, oh, well, I guess I need to...
That's a good question to ask.
Figure out what are the, what are the priority operations in that building? Figure out what are the, what are the priority operations in that building, because I, frankly, again, it's been a while since I've been through the whole thing. So, I just said, "You're talking about, you know, if the ponds gets, have something to them," and, but I said, "This building is the problem in my-" Because isn't it the operations center of the whole thing? So, if that building goes down, where's, where's our redundancy? Where's our backup?
Yeah, and there's two pieces of equipment that needed to be upgraded, and the question is, do they even fit in the building?
Exactly.
And then the, and then the other concern is that we're delivering raw water and such. So, if you can make that tour, and when I find out the date, I'll send it to you.
I will definitely, I'll definitely try. The other thing that we talked about was the, the systems development charges.
We need to upgrade those and stay ahead of it, because obviously, we see the costs that we're incurring on any new construction that are just 100% or more than what we anticipated.
We're getting killed on that, we're not, we're not keeping current with that.
I would speak about two other meetings I did. I did one on the code water quality, which was hosted by John Lewis, and that was input from knowledgeable citizens, and the goal of that was preparation of a request for proposal that would be effective in answering the questions we need answered. And the people that contributed did a very good job, and I trust John's integrating that into his proposal. And then the other, only other meeting I did, which is out of the ordinary, is we met with Metro Commissioner Lewis, Christine Lewis, and members of Commercial River Cruise Lines, and also, uh, one of Paul's locks leadership. And we were talking about integrated approach at such time as we do succeed in getting the dock service, or the, uh, lock serviceable, to maybe integrate our own John Storm dock, and maybe even bring the Eighth Street dock back in operation as standoff points fall, vessels are waiting to go through, and then that goes into the tourism parts. And again, there's only two questions we need answered on John Storm. One is, is it structurally capable of handling vessels of larger size and previously agreed? And two is, what's the procedure? Can we get a waiver on a 60-foot length? And I don't know if I need support from everybody here to give direction, the staff to pursue that? Or what? Do you want, do you want me to ask for support from the other members of the commission?
That'd be great, yeah.
I have support for that to answer those, pursue answering the two questions on John Storm dock. Is it structurally capable of handling vessels of larger? And there's also an agreement that we're limited to 60 feet, can we get a waiver on that? If we can get those answers by staff, it would allow us to move forward, or not, at least we'd have the answers.
And what are we moving forward to?
Well, it's a step in a right, it, it's what we talked about before, I believe in moving forward in parallel with other things. So, just say, just say you've got an immediate answer, that you could do that, you could bring up commercial vessels and you could dock there. Then you could move forward with an attempt to integrate that into our tourism plan immediately. So, it has value, and it's, those aren't hard, those are questions that just need to be posed by staffers. Give us the answers, and we'll get an answer one way or the other. One is structural, one is a legal agreement that we entered into.
I support that.
Thanks.
Yep.
Those are the two meetings I did, they're outside the norm.
Um, you already talked about South Fork, uh, Clackamas Heritage Partners meeting, uh, Thursday. We've delayed, we've bounced meetings back and forth, so Thursday's our next meeting.
This coming Thursday?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't ever get any invitations to those, I know you haven't had any meetings, but I don't get any invitations to them, because I'm your alternate.
Okay. Thursday. I'll be there, though.
But what time?
But, uh, I want to say it's at 4:00, 4:30, or 5:00, I'll, but let me-
Yeah, why don't you just let me know later?
Um, and I know what some of the agenda is, um, the, the last meeting, we did briefly talk about facilities plan in, because, um, uh, both Dan, I, both Dan and Gail, I think, met with Parks Department several months ago in general about facilities plan, um, so they are aware of it. I, I think what, I think I need to just give them a little bit more input about where we're at, and like, what we talked about tonight, but also, I think Clackamas Heritage Partners has not had a real dialogue on what their future is in regards to a building. Um, that's going to be a huge conversation, um, especially if we decide to tear the building down. You know, what, what is their future plans, um, is their future plans, uh, something that, um, fits with a new building, or doesn't fit with a new building, or is that something that they would even, you know? And then, when you talk about the financials, I mean, they've been using that building rent-free for eternity, so, um, there's not going to be a lot of penciling in terms of like, okay, if we build a new building, what is, what does Clackamas Heritage Partners plan to help us build this new building? That's probably not going to happen. So, what, you know, I, I, I think they need to think about what their future is too, and how that relates to the conversation of this building, uh, if and when we ever consider building another building, because I, I think it could go several different ways.
For my, for my benefit, we're talking about the buildings-
After the Oregon Trail.
That the wagons are on, not the building where the administration is, and the gift shop and all of that, we're not talking about that building. Or are we talking about all the buildings?
Well, I think you have to talk about all the buildings.
Because I thought that the building that the office is in and the gift shop was fairly decent.
Okay, the gift shop, which is essentially the county visitor's center, or-
No, it's the state visitor's center, yeah.
Right, state and county, um, is, yeah, in better shape, but that's not where the CHP offices are, those are in the back of the building, which is in the worst condition possible.
In the wagon, in the wagons part.
In the back of the wagon is where a lot of their spaces, but-
Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, there's separate areas in the back that people don't really know about, and those are in really bad shapes, worse shape than the wagons. I, I, I guess I just need to let, I mean, I think they need to start facilitating a conversation amongst themselves about what the future of their organization is in regards to that building, and whether or not they have any input, and whether that building stays the same. Because if that building comes down and changes, that would completely shift their complete outlook of what they're going to do, and maybe they don't go forward as the same entity, I don't know. So, I think they need to start thinking about that too, and that's, that's just one piece of the things that we have to think about when we look at the future of that building, and I don't think they're yet really thinking about that broadly. I just remember the last time we went through a similar process, the input was, "Tear the buildings down," and that did not go over well, but that was also 10 years ago.
He's saying that, or the-
Oh, yeah, at that time, well, everyone was saying that at that time, but a lot has changed since then, um, and the buildings are worse, so, um, anyway, I'm just going to let them know where we're at, they have to have that conversation at some point to give us a heads-up on what they're thinking about their future before, and how that weighs in at this, this conversation.
Well, does the board, should the board have a copy of the facilities plan, at least that section of it?
I'm pretty sure they do, I, I, I-
I mean, that was a question I had, so I have a couple questions, so-
I don't know if they have a, a copy of the facilities plan and where it is now, or not, I can share it with them, I don't know, I thought- They've had a conversation with Park staff about facilities plan and, and in general, and the facilities itself, but I don't know if they've seen that full document.
Yeah, I mean, it, the whole full document doesn't really apply to them, it's just that, that-
I don't know what they've seen on there.
Yeah, I don't either, that's why I was asking, so what, what are, what is CHP doing about the vacancies? I mean, there's a number of people, as you mentioned, have died, who are on the board, and the only people I ever hear about meeting is Dan and Gail, and I know there's other people on the board besides you.
Yes, there's about five of us, but that conversation came up at the last meeting about, um, the, um, future of CHP and vacancies and, and how to, um, add to the board, so that is a conversation that's happening.
And then what about succession planning?
Yep, that's also, because Gail's, well, time is limited, I don't know how long, but, yeah, so all those things came up at the last meeting, but that's been two, two months or more, I think, since we met last.
Okay.
All right, so, uh, CIC, we held elections, so, uh, the former Chair Bob LaSalle was term-limited from his, uh, office there as chair, uh, but he will still remain on the board, uh, or on the committee. Uh, Linda Basinger from the Kenema Neighborhood was elected as the new chair. Uh, C4, we heard transit updates, uh, just about, Trima has been going through their Forward Together, uh, plan to, uh, ideally expand, but that hasn't necessarily been the case for everywhere in the region. Um, so, we heard transit updates, uh, and some information regarding the legislative session. Uh, C4 tolling subcommittee, uh, I unfortunately was unable to make that at the last minute, because, um, I had to, it was during the ice storm, and I, uh, got roped into picking some people up at the airport. So, uh, I was unable to make it to that, um, but if Commissioner Mitchell was there, I'm not sure if you were there, okay. But from my understanding, um, there was just more discussion about, uh, legislative session, what's going on with the special subcommittee on transportation planning, um, which I am following for work, so it's not something that I really missed out too much on, so. And then I did, uh, mention that we had a meeting with the stakeholders involved in the, uh, statistically valid poll regarding tolling and transportation attitudes in the region, and so we were able to, uh, relay concerns about that, and now hopefully that's going to move fist, fast enough, uh, so we can get things, uh, into legislators' hands before the end of session, um.
Do you know when they're proposing to start?
Um, that, that I don't know exactly.
What I heard from City Manager Williams is that it was going to be fairly soon, I mean, like-
Yeah, it, it's going, it, it's, it can be a pretty quick turnaround.
This is the one the mayor proposed, yes, there?
Yes.
Is the financing in place for that?
Yes.
Yes, DHM, um-
So, it's us.
That's a valuable undertaking.
Tuolotin.
Tuolotin.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so-
And Seminole.
There's a good-
Yellow.
Spread out of, uh, stakeholders there, so it isn't just the two communities. Um, and then lastly, uh, youth advisory, I was unable to make it last night, uh, because I wasn't able to make it, uh, in time for work. Uh, however, we did take a trip, a few of our members, plus myself and our community engagement specialists, uh, to the Oregon Youth Summit, which is where there were other youth advisory councils, committees, what have you, uh, from across the state who were there to engage in dialogue, talk about best practices, what's worked, what hasn't worked. And so, I was able to go there with them, it was at, uh, Willamette University, and then afterward, um, there, ideally, there would have been, uh, legislator meetings, but it was the Friday before session started, so no one was there. Uh, but I was able to give them a tour of the building, so that was, uh, cool, and I think it was a, a great experience. And so, I know the mayor will have updates about what happened that last night, meaning that I was unable to attend.
Yeah, unfortunately, nobody that was able to attend was, they were sick, both of them. So, we got a really nice slideshow from staff, but, um, so, Mr. Mitchell.
C4 met from, uh, January 17th, um, heard the same presentation about transit that Mr. Marle mentioned. Um, it's been an interesting discussion, uh, over the ongoing, and I think Paul Savas mentioned that he's been involved for 25 years on this same issue, which is-
I just wonder why it doesn't have any air?
Balance between improving service in areas that already have transit service, as opposed to expanding the service in areas like ours that doesn't have transit, and it seems like it's continuing to tilt toward toward improving service in existing areas, expanding service. Uh, the only other thing that came up was the county talked about their priorities for this legislative session that they're, uh, pushing lobby for. Uh, one being, uh, finalizing funding for the new courthouse, and the other, uh, I-205 congestion in particular, uh, pushing for the third line. Uh, and then we meet tomorrow morning at 7:30.
Woo-hoo!
Woo-hoo!
Lucky you.
I'm excited.
They make toothpicks you can just put here, you know, on your eyes and keep them open? Yeah, so let me start with the youth, youth advisory commission, so, um, Hannah gave a very, um, nice overview of the conference, and it was interesting to me that the governor of the Youth Advisory Summit is a fifth grader.
No, the Oregon kid.
Kid governor, yeah, I was kind of surprised that there were, it's a fifth grader, I thought it would be a high school student, but, oh, well. Apparently, there was, she impressed everybody, she's fairly dynamic, and, and, uh, had, had basically the, you know, had the captive audience, so, as unaccustomed as she said to public speaking, but apparently she did a great job. So, um, we talked about the, um, let me see here, I've got my notes from the meeting, so we talked about that. Um, we would like to set up some more tours of our facilities, so they've already done the police department, so we'd like to have one of our youth advisory committee meetings over at the library, so that they can get the full tour, although I keep running into Julian at the library, and here and there and everywhere, so I know he's seen it. Um, they did get an invitation from John to go out and have a meeting at Public Works, so we can show him all the cool trucks and stuff out there. Uh, we did a sort of a round-robin on topics, and I'll give you just the big laundry list and then tell you what they s- So, they talked about supporting some sort of legislation, they talked about doing a Survey Monkey, uh, involving, you know, how people are feeling, mental health. Uh, they talked about a, um, mock meeting, so like, maybe setting up a commission meeting where we have, you know, plants come in and show them how to do that, how, how meetings are run. They talked about a, uh, possible job or career fair, resume writing, um, a FASPA workshop, so all of you that ever filled out the FASPA, it's like, woo-hoo! I said, "Thank God, I don't have to do that anymore." Um, you're just getting there. I know, it's so exciting! Um, and then they talked about, um, uh, hearing some information about the Park's master plan, and then they talked about doing a clothing drive. So, what they came up with for a possible, a project is coordinating with the Pioneer Pantry and doing a clothing drive that would, um, we'd have information available at the Spring Forward Event on March 9th, so they plan to participate in that. Um, we're still working on the detail, I'm going to decorate the table, but, um, that's about it for that. Uh, then we talked about the, um, uh, If I Was Mayor contest, so, um, the staff has done a great job in getting the word out, and, uh, the deadline is coming up, it's March the 1st, so we're hoping that, um, we get some entries, we got several, she got several inquiries about the poster contest. Um, haven't heard anything about the, the essay or the, the, uh, digital thing yet, but that's, you know, you never know. As one of the students said, "Well, you know, we all like to wait till the last minute to do stuff," and I said, "Okay." Um, they are going to help, uh, uh, review them and judge, so they were, none of them are able to participate in the contest, although Miles wanted to, he was like, "I want to enter," and I, I said, "Well, do you want to resign your position on the Youth Advisory Commission, so you can enter the contest, or you want to stay?" So, um, so that's happening, um. So, that was kind of what we talked about, uh, for that particular meeting, so it was, uh, we actually, we had a quorum, uh, it was great. But we had several people out who were somehow down for the count. Um, Water Environmental Services Policy Committee, um, we have a, an event coming up next week, which is, um, God, I'm trying to think of some outfall, John, what is it that Tri-City's doing that I'm supposed to speak at? Is it the outfall pipe, or is it, it's not pipe bursting, but might be equally exciting. Their outfall, yes, so we're going to have an outfall, a meeting of something with the outfall, and I apparently have to say something, I don't know. Um, you heard the update from the Downtown Association, we don't have our next meeting until the, um, 22nd, and, uh, we're doing, uh, recruiting right now, we've had a couple of people who are interested. Uh, IMPAC, um, uh, as many of you know, I was filling in for, uh, one of the other commissioners, uh, commission member, committee members as the, um, second vice president, so there's the chair, the first vice president, second vice president, and so, when, uh, Vance Dixon-Jones basically vacated the presidency, it moved the county commissioner Pam Trice up to, she's chairing, and then I would have been first vice president, and there's a second vice president. Well, I declined to continue, so I nominated, um, uh, the counselor from Happy Valley, Brent Sherman, and he's now the new vice, second vice, first vice chair of, of the group. Uh, and we are talking about, um, the urban plan, the urban and regional plan, which is, um, going to be very interesting, I think Metro has some very interesting ideas, which the group wasn't really going for. Um, talking about possible expansion of urban growth boundaries, and there's a little bit of pushback on that. Uh, we got an update on housing, um, they also talked a little bit about the, uh, expo center, as you know, there's, uh, back and forth about possible bonds for that, um, and what they want to do with it, so there's a public outreach going on with that. Uh, you heard about South Fork Water Board, um, probably the biggest thing coming up is in June, the, um, AWWA Conference is coming up, and so there has, we have to make a decision at our next meeting as to who's going to go. So, uh, at least the part that South Fork's going to pay for. Pardon?
Nothing.
It's in Anaheim?
Yeah, I think it's the last week of school.
It's June 10th through 13th.
I, I'd consider it, even though I know where I'm at on my term.
It's all right.
Yeah.
You know, I think if, if they're more than, you know, want to go, we can, we can work that out, I, I'm very confident. Um, Willamette Falls and Landings Heritage, we just had a work session, uh, for our last meeting, we met at the City of Wilson- we met at the City of Wilsonville, and we talked a lot about continuing outreach to the tribes regarding the National Heritage Area legislation that is moving forward. Greg Leo is, who's a lobbyist, in his day job, but also is working with our legislate, our congressional delegation on getting all of them on board to move this forward. It just seems like, you know, we move forward, we get to a certain point, and then it moves back, and then it's just back and forth because of the, the change with our congressional districts, so I thought we, for sure, we're gonna move it forward. We do have some agreement with most of the tribes, and as you can well imagine, there's probably one out there that's still, you know, being, you know, saying, well, we don't like the language, so it's been, I would say, flat-lined, so that it's fairly neutral. The locks authority, I'm not gonna say much about it, I asked for Jacob to put that information sheet in your last packet, and so that's kind of where we are right now. We're making, trying to make sure that we have all of the legal language set in place so that the, so that the Corps can make the transfer. And the big issue with the transfer from the, from the Corps to the authority is that it has to do with Section 106, which is dealing with the National Historic Preservation Act, and you know, its significance and all of how it relates to the locks, but the work is continuing, we've gone on a couple of tours to see what the Corps is doing within terms of the, the work, and so they're working away, I don't know where they are on the Gudgeon Arms, which is the thing that makes the, the gates open, but that's what they were claiming that was the problem, that's why they had to shut it down, and I said, well, have you X-rated, have you looked in there to see, I mean, you can't see in there, because it's in solid rock, so we know what we don't know. But at least the, the work is continuing. The other thing with the, with the locks authority is that they are trying to reengage some of the upriver users, so there was a couple of business owners that were involved early on that moved goods and services down through the locks, that have now had to resort to complete trucking, which they, it's not good, because it's super, super expensive. So that's been, that, that conversation is continuing, ongoing. Christine Lewis is chair, is chairing the locks authority, which is, which is really good. We did have our little, and I say little, our little city meeting with Commissioner Smith, and I will say this, she was kind of on a tear at the meeting, not so much about I-205 tolling, but about housing, so she has gotten on the bandwagon with regard to putting aside some money for supportive housing, workforce housing that could be owned. Julie Fitzgerald and I presented her with some information about Proud Ground, the organization that builds houses for people, and then you get to, get to lock in a rate, and she was just, she's like, embraced this, so we'll see how that goes. We did ask her questions about what we're doing, about purchasing more hotels for transitional housing, and she was not really forthcoming about that, I know you're all going, oh, I'm shocked about that. So that was that. So in, in deference to my colleague about my picture being taken with the governor, so I had the opportunity to attend a reception last Friday on behalf of the city. The Emperor of Japan's birthday is celebrated all over the world, wherever there's a council at, so this was the gathering of the supporters of, I said Emperor Hihito? That's terrible, I don't even remember who the emperor was, but anyway, so we had a big birthday party, the governor spoke, and a senator from Idaho, so apparently, the council general of Oregon also shares a portion of Idaho, because I, the guy got up and started talking, and I said to the city manager of Newburgh, I said, who the heck is that? And he goes, oh, it's some senator from Idaho. Obviously, not one I've ever heard of, but anyway, he also spoke. The governor apparently has been to Japan and was an exchange dude when she was 15, and spoke some fluent Japanese, which I was pretty impressed with. So it was very nice, I, I ate some raw food for the first time, tried it, I'm not a big fan, but it was good, so that's why I was there with the governor. And you're smiling and smirking, I know you're gonna make some comments, or just go.
Afterwards.
Go right ahead.
You ate raw fish?
I ate some scallops that were on a sushi.
Oh, that's premium.
Oh, it, let me tell you, it was good. I also got some samples, I will say this, of some sake, I mean, about that much.
Oh, you need more than that.
Well, that's all I was willing, I was driving myself, so I did not, I did not go, but I, I represented the city, and, and I will say that just for the, for, just to tease him, the city manager of Newburgh had a lot to say about our finance director, which was quite interesting, so I just.
Should we ask him up here to defend himself, or what?
No, I'm not, I mean, I'm not, I, I'm not going to tell tales, he, he already knows about it, so.
What's his phone number, I gotta call?
Oh, I've got his business card, would you like it?
Yeah.
I can send it to you, so anyway, so it was quite interesting, and he's blushing because he knows whatever the guy said is probably true. And I also met one of Jacob's colleagues, their, their new city recorder, and the mayor of Newburgh, so that was, that was nice. So there were a number of colleagues there that I, people that I saw that, that I knew from other parts of my life that were at this thing, so it's a, it's a big deal. And our sister city people from our committee were there, and that was very nice. So that's where I'm gonna conclude, and I think we don't have any further business, and we probably all like to go home, so I will adjourn the meeting.